Good evening. I'd like to call to order the March 10, 2025 work session of the York County School Board. It's hard to believe that the year is flying by. We're already in March and not far from actually spring, calling it officially, I guess, spring. And spring break is around the corner, so hang in there. Thank you all for being here as we continue to work together to support our schools and community. Just before we get started, I do want to say one thing. I owe Dr. Shandor an apology because evidently in several meetings, I refer to his last name as Shandur, and it should be Shandor. So publicly, I would like to say, I'm sorry, somebody pointed that out to me.
I'd like that in writing.
I just want to make that clear. Okay, so we're going to start with presentations. We have quite a few this evening. Our first one will be capital projects. And Dr. Shandor, would you like to introduce our first presenter this evening?
Thank you. You can call me whatever you want. It's fine. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, board members. We have a number of presentations that we're going to jump into tonight. Our first one is our capital projects presentation. And this is the last presentation that Mr. Shearhart will be presenting to the board as he is going to hop into retirement. He has 37 years of dedicated service to the York County School Division. He's been in his role as the Associate Director for Capital Plans for 13 years. We are really going to miss Mark. Mark has done amazing work, not only working around the capital projects in all 19 of our schools and a number of other buildings, but what you may not know about Mark is the time that he goes into schools and talks to kids, and talks to kids and shares plans and whatnot in the schools with elementary kids or middle school kids. So Mark's done a wonderful job here. And unfortunately, Dr. Carroll's working with the situation right now. He wanted to share some remarks as well. But Mark, we're going to miss you. We appreciate all you've done. If we could just give Mark a just... Quite honestly, Mark, any other tie tonight would have been perfect. I know.
Okay, here's your, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Chair, Jenter Shandor.
Thank you.
Here's your capital project report from March. So the first project we'd like to touch on is Bruton High School roof repair and coating. They have completed replacing all the metal paneling on the building, all the metal siding with the insulation in it. They've continued to work on metal trim and downspouts, and you'll see some pictures of that. They have continued replacing the windows. They were working on them actually yesterday. And they also began coating roof edges. Remember, that was the last portion of what they had to do with the roof. They had to, you got the center portion done, and they had about two feet left all the way around the building that they had to finish up the coating. And the weather's started cooperating. This is one of the windows in the cafeteria they replaced yesterday. And here you can see along the edge of the roof here, they've actually coated back about three feet. They cut out about two feet here. You can see the gutters are installed, and they put the metal trim in, and then they coated the roof there, finished the coating on the roof. So they have about 70% of the edge of the roof coated now. So they're getting very close to the end of this project. We've ordered the lettering to put on the building. It says Bruton High School on the side of it, and also School of the Arts. And they've got some ladders on order, and a couple other small things like that. But this pretty much is getting wrapped up here. I believe it'll be done by the end of April. So the next project is one that Michael Piverall, who is our project manager now, this is Michael over here in the corner here. He's our project manager for Capital Plans and Projects. And he's handling this one right now. So right now, the stage curtains and the seats should arrive in mid-July. By mid-July, we should have it all. He's met with all the staff in the schools. They've selected all the carpet tiles. That's done now. We're working on the lighting and sound system proposals. Initially, we were going to just replace the stage lighting in the auditoriums, but the house lighting in some of the auditoriums is also in poor condition. So we're going to replace that in several of the auditoriums. And also, it gives us one central console that will control the stage and the house lighting, instead of having two different people controlling the lighting. Then lastly, he's waiting on proposals for some other work. It has some demolition work, some concrete work that needs to go on as part of these auditorium upgrades. So he's waiting on those proposals as well. So he's moving forward on those. The next project is astroturf field installation. This is a project that Greg Dolix is taking charge of. And they've been continuing work on the field as weather has permitted. You know, there's been some of this stuff, white stuff called snow, it's been slowing things down, and also rain has also really impacted them. But they did get the concrete curves poured, and they did get some drainage installed in the ball field. Then soil stabilization is next. I think I told you in the last meeting, when they did the proof roll there, they had some squishy areas in the ball field. So what they're going to do is they're going to mix concrete with the soil, and they'll make a nice firm bed for the astroturf. So here you can see on the left-hand side of the picture here, you can see some of the curving here against the asphalt track. And there's more curving here in the center of the picture. And then here's a picture of the overall view of it. Once they get the soil stabilization in place, they should really start to be able to move on this project. So the last project is the TAB High School additions and renovations. So the geothermal solicitation went out this morning for installing the geothermal well field. The engineer is finalizing the LED lighting replacement plans. We're tying in the ball field lighting, or making that, changing that to LED, as well as the building LED lighting. So he's working on finishing tying that, tying those projects together there. Right now, we're also in the process of negotiating with an A&E firm for the design of the renovation additions. Lastly, we're also planning to adjust the renovation scope to stay within the budget. And we want to get as much as we can done on the building within the budget. So some of the features of the project is converting the building HVAC, converting the building HVAC to geothermal. This is a lot more efficient system for heating and cooling the building. We currently have eight buildings that have geothermal in them right now. And they're some of our, they're our most efficient buildings to run right now in the county. The next thing is the LED lighting. That will also save some energy there. We plan to cut that energy, the lighting energy, almost in half. And it's a significant number of energy that we use for lighting. Next, we plan to build a new, modernized front to the building. We want to make something that's more inviting to the public when they come out to the building, and something that really says, this is TAB High. Next, we want to provide the learning commons in the vein of what we did at Bruton High School and York High School already. Right now, they have a very small library, and they only have one collaboration space. We want to increase that. Next, we want to increase some, we want to create some additional classrooms inside the building envelope. Currently, there's several classrooms, classes that meet in a mobile classroom outside. We'd like to pull those students inside the building. So we'd like to create some additional classrooms inside the building. We want to enhance the gymnasium entrance. I mean, when you walk up to the gymnasium entrance, I'm not sure how often you all go there, but you walk up to the gymnasium. Right now, there's dumpsters on one side, there's a coolant tower, and the chiller on the other side, and just junk piled over here and there. So we want to just clean that all up and really give the visitors and give the visiting teams, give the students, and also their families something to be proud of when they're walking into the gymnasium. Next one down here is renovating the restrooms and locker rooms. So this is areas of the building that have not been touched or not been renovated since 1972, when we built the building. So some of them have the original fixtures in these restrooms and the locker rooms. Now, you know, last year, last summer, we did a lot of work around the locker room areas, but that was mostly in the team rooms and not inside the locker rooms. And we knew, we didn't do that work inside these rooms because we knew the renovation was coming. So we left the locker rooms pretty much alone last summer. And then lastly, if we do get an opportunity, we'd like to install a solar array on the roof there at TAB High School, which would also greatly reduce the power consumption of the building and make the building much more economical to run. And that's my last slide.
Thank you, Mark.
Not just for this evening, that's my last slide.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Shearhart?
Yes, I do, actually. And it all comes from, I know we've got a budget stream coming up, that we can't get everything that we want. And I know, you know, anytime a project like this is put together, we go for everything that we want. And I guess what I'm looking for is, have we identified the different projects as desperately need, need, want, and then like or wish? You know, that if we had all the money that we could, these would be added in? I'd like to see a classification process like that, rather than an all or nothing. You know, this is what we have when we're doing all of this, or we don't do anything at all, especially knowing that we've got this budget. I want what's best for our students to achieve academic success in the classroom, and what the teachers need in the classroom to facilitate the student's success. That's my focus. But I also know that our taxpayers, our citizens, only have so much money that we can't just keep going up. And looking at the budget, it looks like that the budget has increased $5 million every year. And this next fiscal year budget has the same thing, that it's going up. I know as a taxpayer in York County, I don't have a closet full of extra tax dollars. And so I'm looking at some of these, you know, is there a way to look at, also, when we're looking at the CIP, is what happens if the budget ends up being cut by 5%, by 10%, by 20%? Do we have that identified in the CIP? And I guess I'm looking at both of, you know, for...
Well, that's happened before.
Budget-wise, yeah.
So that's happened before. We've had the CIP frozen a number of years ago. We didn't do any projects. And so we basically...
Yeah, during COVID.
Yes, so we basically moved all those projects back. So my question to you would be, which of what we presented at TAB High School, what would you cut?
Well, I think it's looking at this, is the learning commons a desired wish, or is it a desperate need driven by a mandate or data? You know, this is going to help the students succeed having this, or is that something that we can move off? The enhancing the gymnasium entrance, yes, I know. I've gone in and out of there a lot, and I've seen it, and I know what it looks like. But is that something that's a desperate need, or is that a like or wish that we can, you know, put off, knowing that we've got this issue with the budget and along those lines? The solar panels, the cost under that, does the budget include the equipment necessary to convert from DC to AC, or to make sure that all of the user systems underneath it can use the DC?
So if I could...
What's that extra expense?
If I could just interject, because you've asked about 15 questions.
I'm sorry.
So if we could take them one at a time, I think that would be helpful. I think part of understanding, Mark, if you can go back one or two slides for me. One more, one more. So if you see the last one there, that fourth bullet where it says, planning to adjust the renovation scope, I think part of it is making sure that we are, we are sharing the process so people understand the construction process. So if citizens or board members or others who may not understand how this, how this process works, you know, we have a facilities master plan that has all of this information in there that's great detail. So I would encourage you and others to really read through there to see if you go, I forget which page it is in the facilities master plan, the number one most expensive building to run is TAB High School. So we know that. So that kind of checks off geothermal and LED lighting, right? So we know that's something that's needed. The other thing I think it's important to bring up is, Mark just shared, we have fixtures in there from 1972. So the question is, if TAB High School or Grafton or our high schools are the number top five schools in the state of Virginia, are we comfortable keeping them in 1972? Do we want a 1972 library? Or do we want to provide collaborative spaces with resources to kids to modernize what education looks like now? So...
I understand that. It's just, when you have limited dollars, that's what I'm looking at, to see the whole idea of what's desperate, whatever.
Dollars can't be too limited when they gave a tax cut. I mean, didn't they just give a tax cut this last?
Okay, I'm talking about what we get in hand, you know, wherever...
But what I'm saying is this, money shouldn't be too much of an issue when there was a tax cut, okay? Not to mention the fact that we have the lowest in the bottom quarter, bottom third of the state in dollars spent per pupil. So I think York County is very, very frugal. We do what's needed. And hey, I still got 1972 locker rooms at Bruton, okay? But I will tell you this...
I'm just putting the questions out there.
The learning commons was a very good addition, because it is totally used all the time. We got rid of the old computer labs, and...
Students.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when you think about...
It is for the students.
Yeah. So when you think about the converting, and it's more of a converting, so when you're adding the learning commons, you're sort of killing two birds with one stone, right? You're going to create the space for the kids to have this opportunity, like the kids at York High School have, and like the ones at Bruton have, to use that space. Teachers sign out and use that space all the time. It has flexible seating in it, plus all of the different rooms. So it's a wonderful opportunity and resource for our kids. But at TAB, the numbers are growing. TAB Middle School is, you know, we have a lot of kids coming up through the system. So there's some, there's some grade levels that are pretty high. So what I'd prefer, if we have an opportunity, we convert the old library, is that what it's called? Are we calling it library? The old library, whatever the official term is, you convert that into classrooms. So you can convert that into, I don't know, Mark, three or four. So if we can gain four classrooms...
I bet it will help.
To convert with a new learning commons. So you're kind of doing, you're kind of killing two birds with one stone when it comes to that. However, I do want to make sure that I share this again. We are planning to adjust the renovation scope. Like, we've met with a county, we've talked about what the process is. However, when the bid process starts, we can't share information, like, right? Like, when you think about the procurement rules, we can't share information until that process is finished. So, you know, we have a history, at least I'll speak for my 11 years, we have a history of doing renovations that we have never said, let us have nice-to-haves. We've never said, let us have nice-to-haves. We have focused on closing breezeways. We focused on putting, what do they call when you go, security vegetables in every school. We have focused on upgrading, you know, schools and hallways that have been around since the 50s and 60s. So I think we have been extremely responsible and reasonable with our request. And that's what I can't control. I can control assessing what needs to be done, and then trying to execute it. What I can't control is the cost of construction. I can't control that. However, we also know that when we come back to this, we are going to be relooking at the solar. We're going to be relooking at the side entrance. Like, the side entrance isn't going to be a Taj Mahal like you're walking into, you know, the Staples Center in Los Angeles. I mean, we're talking about cleaning things up a little bit, right, to make them adequate, so to speak. And I think the other part that citizens and folks need to remember is, once we touch these schools, we're not going back there for, you know, maybe 30 years. I mean, we have sinks in TAB High School that are from 1972. York High School has issues and concerns as well. So we have slowly made our, you know, continued progress. We've done this all the way through the elementary schools. We have done, I don't know how many renovations that we've done, where, you know, quite honestly, I get offended when we get questioned so much on a few of these things. I understand the money part, but also, this isn't personal. We're advocating for the schools in the county and for our kids to have a safe place to go to school, that's warm in the winter, you know, cool in the, in the spring, where they can flourish. So to answer your question, yes, we will absolutely plan to adjust the renovation scope. That is absolutely in our plans.
Can I ask this question too? It's actually two separate budgets. The CIP is one budget, which is where this comes from. The one that we're having, I don't know if we're ever having issues with, but the one where we're getting less money is our regular, normal operating budget. So we're not really concerned as much right now with this budget, unless the county says, well, to make the operating budget work, we got to take some money from the CIP.
And we understand they play hand in hand. We fully understand that. And again, this isn't our, you know, this is our first day working through this. We've done this for, you know, more than a decade now.
Many times before.
And the library at TAB, by the way, has been there since the 70s. I mean, same size, everything. And it's pretty small.
I think the only thing we removed was the card catalog. That's it.
Mark, whenever you mentioned, within the building envelope, you're going to bring more classrooms, that's the library part we're talking about, four classrooms extra.
These are all ideas. You know, once we, once we finish negotiating with the A&E firm, and we get a contract in place, then we can sit down and actually start working on the renovation scope. We haven't been able to do that yet. So we don't have, you know, I have in my mind some of the things that are priorities, and then going down the ladder. But I need to find out from the architect what they think each of these things are going to cost, so we can make some decisions.
And that's, that's a great point to make, Mark, because understanding those numbers in each of those blocks are just projections. They're just projections. And, you know, as Mark just said, once we get closer to that information, we'll be able to nail down these things. Because, yes, then you start prioritizing. When you say, oh, no, this is, this is way too much, we need to sway...
Something else comes up.
Correct.
I have a question. When the, when the A&E comes out with their report and their suggestions, do they say you can do this, and it's going to be this amount if you do these five things? Or you can have similar results, not at the, you know, the diamond level or platinum level that you originally want? But then there's this that you can go to if you need to come down. Do we get that kind of report from A&E that they break it down?
And I don't know, because we haven't sat down to talk to the A&E firm yet. So I don't know what we're going to get. And I want to say this here, I'm very, I'm very responsible to taxpayers. I want to be fiscally responsible to taxpayers. We are not building a Taj Mahal here. No way. It's just beyond me to be able to do that. I can't do that. Now, I grant, I'm going out the door, though. You know, all the renovations we've done, all the renovations we've done, we've done to be fiscally responsible to all the taxpayers. It's their dollars. We want to make sure it's used wisely. We want to use it for the best for our children. We don't need a Taj Mahal to teach the children. We need something that's nice, that's utilitarian. But it needs to look good, too.
It's going to be something similar to what we already seen then.
Yes. That's, that's what my thought is.
And just, I would like to add, because, and I don't remember who did the specific presentation, so forgive me, but there was a presentation where you laid out, especially when it came to the geothermal, how much money we are going to save overall with that geothermal in there. So a lot of these projects are credited down the road to our bank account, so to speak, because we are implementing more efficient ways of, you know, generating power and so forth. So that's going to be a savings that's going to accumulate year over year down the road as well, that will help, you know, in some respect with some of these other things that we want to do. So that's something we need to take into consideration. And I don't remember who did the exact breakdown of the numbers, but I remember the numbers being significant in the savings.
Right.
You might, I mean, does anybody else recall that?
I don't remember the exact ones.
I don't remember the numbers, but I remember the...
They stood out to me. I was like, oh, you're going to save that much with geothermal?
Just with the LED lighting, cutting the electricity in...
In half.
In half, yeah.
Lighting. High schools are pretty big.
Yeah, so...
I mean, we're talking a lot of square foot.
Yeah.
I can see that, definitely.
All right, anything further?
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your service.
All right, moving on with our presentations, our next one is on budget.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Ms. Goodwin. Mr. Bowen is going to provide an update on our FY25, as well as FY26 budgets. And Dr. Wrights is going to add a little bit at the very end related to one of our processes that we shared with you. I think it was a question at the last board meeting about, what was it?
Quadrant.
Quadrant review. So he's going to jump in there. Mr. Bowen?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. So this evening, I'll be providing an update on the FY26 and FY25 and 26 budgets. Since the superintendent presented his budget in February, we've had two key developments that have occurred. First, a revision to our average daily membership for both 25 and 26. And as you know, ADM is a critical factor in state funding, and I'll explain how these changes impact our budget. The second is the conclusion of the General Assembly session in late February, and I will summarize the budget actions included in their adopted bill. Now, I do want to remind the staff and board members and the community that the budget document, you're going to be presented with a budget document in March. That document historically is based on the governor's budget. So I'm going to give you some General Assembly budget information, but we're going to present to you on the governor's budget, as we always do. If there's changes that come from the General Assembly's actions, then we will present those to you at a later date, as well as the changes from the local government. So board members, you will recall that this information was part of the superintendent's proposed budget in February. And looking at 2025, our budget was initially based on the ADM of 12,966 students. Now, that's our current fiscal year, and that's highlighted in green. However, when the governor released his budget in December, the Virginia Department of Education revised our projected ADM, increasing it by 176 to 13,142. And that's for the current year, and by 401 students for FY26 to 13,367. Now, these projections raise some concerns as the increases were significant for both years. As a result, we contracted with the Weldon Cooper Center at UVA for a secondary assessment of our ADM. And based on their findings and then discussions with staff, we have revised our numbers. So for FY25, our revised ADM is now 13,061, which is where we're currently trending. This is an increase of 95 students over our current budget, but it's 81 students fewer than the Department of Education. For FY26, our revised ADM is now 13,268, which is an increase of 302 students over our current budget and 99 fewer students than VDOE's projection.
It's significant. Do we know where they're coming from?
No, they just use different metrics for measuring. I will tell you that the information that we provided, Weldon Cooper, was more just of a historical nature from 2016 to 2025 of what our, what that enrollment has been. Neither, neither projections, this is not an exact science. So neither projection, though, takes into account, you know, the impact of the military moves here in York County, doesn't take into account the construction that's occurring in York County. And as Dr. Carroll presented at the Facilities Master Plan presentation in November, we saw that 2024, 25 was one of the biggest years of construction. So that did give us some, you know, reason for concern. And that's the reason why we backed off a little bit, because we do believe that students are coming to York County. Yeah. The good thing about this is, while we believe the numbers have some flexibility there, we do have a number of positions that are proposed in the budget. So if the ADM of the students don't materialize, we can pull back on the position, new teacher positions. So let's take a look at FY25 budget. So we're currently working with three budget versions. We have the original FY25 budget that was approved in June of 2024. This is with an ADM of 12,966. We here have the governor's budget, which includes that increase of 95 students. And as we look at the standards of quality funding, you'll see that we have an increase of 755,000 as a result of the increase in students. The General Assembly's budget also takes into account that revised ADM, and you'll note here that the increase is 773,000. There's a slight difference between the governor's proposed budget and the General Assembly's budget on that line item. And just real briefly, I'll explain it because there's a, there's a difference in the lottery programs, too. It has to do with at-risk funding. At-risk funding is funded either through SOQ line item or through the lottery programs. And it just so happens that when the governor proposed it, it fell into the lottery-funded programs. But when the General Assembly proposed it, it fell into the standards of quality. That's, standards of quality are state general funds. Lottery dollars, of course, come from the lottery funds. So there's a slight difference there between the General Assembly and the governor. Total incentive program funding, we have a small increase of about 22,000, both for the governor's and General Assembly's budget. This is resulting in the increase in the compensation supplement that comes from that category, which is related to the increase in the average daily membership. So as the number of students increase, your funding, your funding formula for teachers and support staff also increases. So then they apply those increases to the compensation formula. And so we're seeing a slight increase in that, in that area. In the lottery programs, I'm sorry, in the categorical funding, we see a small increase of $1,200 in, for both the governor and the General Assembly's budget, and that's related to special education, homebound services, just a slight increase in the children that we're serving. And then the lottery programs, we see a $300,000 decrease from the original budget when you compare it to the General Assembly and Governor. And what happened here, so the original budget was developed more than a year ago. And so we... have to work off projections. But when the governor releases and the general assembly release their budgets and updates for the current year, then those numbers are trued up. And so now what we're seeing is more actual reflection of the participation in the special education regional programs as opposed to last year's projection. So this concludes the, the updates to the FY twenty-five budgets. Again, we will present to you the March budget and March, the updates to the middle column, FY twenty-five, governor proposed.
Before you go to the next slide, any questions on that?
I'm surprised the lottery went down.
Yeah.
Because I thought with the restrictions on the, the other games that came out, you know, there was competition to the lottery. I thought that lottery would have been higher.
Yeah.
And also, why is this early childhood programs reduced so much?
So early childhood programs, so this is based on participation. So we run a three-quarter day program, but you're only funded either on full day or half day. So our projection of those, those students that were participating was based on six hundred and thirty. However, when we start to look at the numbers that are participating, actually participating, that number's been reduced. There, there was about a hundred, a hundred and thirty thousand dollar reduction for the governor's budget and two hundred and fifty-four thousand for the general assemblies budget, a little, little more than what I expected. We need to dig into that and figure out what, what's actually happening there.
And if we were to have full-time preschool within New York County, how much would we have increase in funding from the state on the, that kind of?
So if we go back and look at the calculation tool, the budget calculation tool from VDOE, what they budget for us is about eleven, one point one, one point two million dollars. That's if we're running a hundred and seventy-six kids at a full-time program. That is just a portion of what it takes to fund a preschool program. So it would require a significant investment by local government or an increase by the state. And then we, that would require additional bus drivers, because the reason why we run a three-quarter program has large part to do with the transportation.
Nice. Thank you.
And then lastly, I've, I've got to mention the bonus. Not included in the general assemblies, I mean, in the governor's or original budget is what the general assembly included, which is a thousand dollar bonus funding, I'm sorry, funding for a thousand dollar bonus for OSQ funded positions. We talked about this at the last meeting. So we've done some, just quick estimates. If we were to provide a thousand dollars to every employee, every full-time employee, it would require about another five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars in additional dollars. Now, where could that money come from? It could come from, potentially from end-of-year funds. We haven't worked, started our, our process in identifying what our end-of-year fund balance is going to be. But certainly, if there's money available, we will bring that back to the board for discussion and for your approval if you decide to go that route.
Do we know what neighboring divisions are doing?
Not neighboring divisions, but some of my colleagues from around the state, they are looking to make it a thousand dollars. There's some concern about, you know, the economic forecast and what that might do for next year. And we, we share those concerns. But some of the school divisions I've heard from, one, one that's about our size, Roanoke County, they're, they're looking at the full thousand for all employees. And again, this is a thousand dollar bonus that's pre-tax. People, when they hear this, they're expecting a full thousand.
I won't be on a check.
There's a significant contribution that we have to come from local funds to give that thousand dollars to, to each employee. And so we're, what we have to do is we have to look at, okay, the full-time employees will get it. What about our part-time employees? We have a lot of part-time employee groups, so we have to decide how many of those folks and those, and those groups would be eligible. And then we have to determine at what point that a person started working for us in fiscal year twenty-five, would they be eligible for a bonus? So if they started working for us in April, is it really fair to give them a full bonus as opposed to folks who have been here with us all year long?
And then you also have to consider with the end-of-year dollars. I mean, we, we really rely on those end-of-year dollars for multiple projects, whether it's buses, technology.
Well, as we talked about earlier, there's concerns about CIP. And so we typically use end-of-year dollars to, as cash contributions to our CIP. So.
Which we've already.
Which we've committed a lot.
Which we already committed a lot of dollars.
Yes, sir, yeah. Okay. So let's move on to the FY twenty-six budget. So on this slide, this is a slide of the governor's proposed budget, and it's just comparing the original ADM that we use for the superintendent's proposed budget now to the revised ADM, which we believe is more accurate. It's a reduction of ninety-nine students, and you can see the reduction in revenue in each of those categories. We lose about seven hundred and fourteen thousand dollars as a result. Consequently, we, we adjusted our expenditures. Initially, we projected needing sixteen, sixteen additional teachers for four hundred and one new students. But with the revised ADM, we now anticipate only needing twelve teachers, thereby reducing the expenditures by three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And so let's look at the budget impact. So with that revised ADM, we see our total available funds decrease by seven hundred and fourteen thousand. And then our expenditures for future-ready graduates decreased by three hundred and twenty thousand. And the resulting change brings, or increases our budget gap or, or budget shortfall to almost three point six million dollars. So when the superintendent presented his budget, that was close to three point two. So we've increased that a little bit. Now, this slide is a comparison of the governor's revised budget to the general assemblies adopted budget. And here we see some positive changes. So ADM is the same, but when you look at SOQ funding, that increases by almost two point nine million dollars with the general assemblies budget. And this includes two point four million dollars for the restoration of support positions now included in the SOQ formula. And then also five hundred and fifty thousand for special education add-on funding. In, in the area of incentive funding, we see an increase of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. And again, this is for the compensation supplement due to the additional positions being included, support positions being included in the SOQ formula. Lottery programs increase slightly by fifty-eight thousand for some additional at-risk funding provided by the general assembly. There's no changes to categorical or early childhood programs. So in total, the general assemblies budget increases our revenue by over three million dollars. And then we can take a look and see how this impacts our budget. So now our total funds available would increase to almost seven point nine million dollars, reducing the budget gap or shortfall to five hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And so, which is a significant improvement and probably the best case scenario we could look for at this point.
And then that rest of that will be funded through local?
Well, that's what we would hope. If the local government cannot fund this, then we would have to make reductions within that budget. And most likely, it would come from the compensation increase.
But now we're looking at a five hundred and twelve thousand dollar budget gap. Whereas before.
If they go with the general assembly.
If they go, right, right.
That's a big if.
That's a big if, yeah, yeah. Did I, did I hear that right? You said you were looking at the compensation would handle adjustments?
We would, we would have to adjust. Much, much of what was in the budget were.
Legal mandates.
Legal mandates.
For compensation.
SOQ changes that we had to, to satisfy. Compensation is the one area that we would have to look at if we didn't have this budget gap covered.
Is there any other area that we can find money?
So what we've done in the past is we've had an agreement with the county on utilizing revenue stabilization funds. So we had a nine, we had nine hundred thousand from that reserve fund for one year, stepped down to six, it stepped down to three, and then it carried on to three for one more year. The, the only problem that we, we hesitate by making that suggestion is that we are, we have committed a significant amount of that cash reserve for our CIP. With the uncertainty that many of us are feeling in the economy and that some, that the general assembly is already talking about, there would be some concern that if there was a budget reduction from the state, that would be the first place we would go to, is, is to the revenue stabilization fund. So I would not recommend going to that fund any, any more than what we've already committed to.
Yeah, because you, you said you've gone down in that over, over time.
These are recurring dollars too. They're not one-time dollars.
Yeah. And we, we did that for a couple of years, years ago with Mr. Morgan to help sort of even some things out. And it, and it worked out well for us. But where we are right now, back then, we weren't putting millions of dollars into the CIP, which is we are now. And also, we've committed to doing these projects in summer to upgrade the auditoriums, which haven't been upgraded in, you know, fifty years.
Since inception.
Yeah, right, since the schools were built. So, so we've, we have, we've committed a lot of those funds already, and I would agree. We're not in a position that we would recommend to use the revenue stabilization funds for that. And the reason why we felt comfortable committing some of the funds is because we had four million dollars, over four million dollars that we had received in excess, in excess Impact Aid funds that were deposited last year. So, you know, if we were to see significant receipts of revenue in excess from, from Impact Aid, that's something we could consider. But at this point in the year, I'm almost four million dollars short of our target. So in our budget, eight point seven million dollars is relied upon Impact Aid. I'm about four million dollars short of that right now. So I don't know if that's, we don't believe it's being held up anything at the federal government. Sometimes it's just the timing. We don't know when we're going to receive those funds. But I'll tell you, last year, I received significant deposits in April and May. So we're optimistic that that's going to continue.
So you don't just get a one-time deposit. Here's your big check. It doesn't go in like that. It goes in different increments.
Right. And then, and part of the agreement is, if for some reason we don't meet our target of eight point seven million dollars in Impact Aid, the agreement between the board and board of supervisors dated back to nineteen ninety-three or nineteen ninety-four states that we can request that that shortfall be carried or covered by the revenue stabilization fund, which means we would be taking another significant deposit from that, a withdrawal from that, from that fund.
So you think government's going to have budget in March?
It's the date now. March 11th?
No. No. I'll, I'll talk about the next steps.
So last year was like.
So, so the governor has until March twenty-fourth to act on the general assemblies budget. In April, the general assembly will reconvene to consider any amendments. If changes are made, the budget will go back to the governor for final approval. And then assuming the process stays on schedule, staff will present the final budget to the board at the May business meeting. And then our final slide, this is part of the Dr. Shandor's budget presentation in February. There are some details that need to be shared, and I will turn that over to Dr. Wrights.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Shandor. Last month, Dr. Nichols presented on how Y C S D conducts their quadrennial review. And the groups reviewed, we shared those groups and how we continue to be competitive in the market with the region and our peninsula districts. Based on Dr. Shandor's February presentation on the budget, he stated there was a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar budget implication related to position adjustments and our quadrennial review. So this slide captures those adjustments. One is what we realized through the quad review was our bus assistants were currently the lowest wage in the region. And so we are asking for a three percent scale adjustment to bring them up to be equal with our competing, competing districts. Then we have two position adjustments. So for our administrative associates that currently right now are at the hundred and ninety-seven day calendar, they will be moved to two hundred and seventeen day for operational support. And that's part of a three-year routine and schedule that we've had put in place because last year, we moved them from one eighty-five to one ninety-seven, and then next year, we're going to move them so that they're all on the same pay scale and the same days working. And then we also have our middle school principals have asked our middle school counseling directors to go from eleven month, twelve month. And that is for scheduling purposes and enrolling students, that there's not that month that students are not registered and are not, schedules are not produced. And then we have a few grade adjustments due to the following below the, the minus plus five percent for the quad review. And we have an HR technician, we're going to move from a thirteen to a fourteen. We have the lead copy shop from a fourteen to fifteen. And our custodial area supervisor, a seventeen to eighteen, and our records manager from an eighteen to nineteen. And those are all the grade adjustments based on that quad review. And that is it.
And that concludes the update for the seat.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we are going to look at our FY twenty-three, twenty-seven strategic plan, mid-year student attendance.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Goodwin. This evening, Dr. Aaron Butler, our Director of Student Services, he's going to present some information to you related to attendance and chronic absenteeism data during the first semester of our twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And when he's, when he finishes that, he is going to transition right into a presentation related to student behavior and conduct. So, so we don't have to stop. We can sort of keep rolling after that presentation. So, Dr. Butler?
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor, thank you for this opportunity to provide an update to a strategic plan for supportive culture specifically for student attendance. The frame of presentation this evening, I'll go into three categories. First, we'll look at the definition of what are the metrics and methodology we use to collect and report student attendance data. Then we'll go into a review of the data for the first semester with comparisons from FY twenty-four to FY twenty-five for both of those timeframes. And then I'll share information about some of these school-based interventions and structures we use to support consistent school attendance. So there's two buckets we use when it comes to attendance. One is truancy, and the other one is chronic absenteeism. So truancy goes more into legal compliance, and that's based off of the code of Virginia. As you know, in Virginia, it's compulsory for students to go to school from age five to seventeen. And so in order to make sure that we have that in place, we have to have procedures and protocols installed to make sure that we are tracking that data and doing correct interventions. So whenever a student has accrued five unexcused absences, Virginia code requires that we do have to have an intervention meeting. And so that's why parents are so important. Parents have to be brought into that meeting along with the student and the school-based team to talk about what is the challenges or the barriers preventing the student from attending school on a regular basis. And then if the student accrues ten unexcused absences, those students are referred to court services. We have a division truancy officer who provides that for us. So again, truancy more is looking at our numbers for legal compliance. When it comes to chronic absenteeism, that is more of an academic impact. So we know that when students miss more than ten percent of the academic school year, they are a larger trajectory for falling behind their peers. They tend to have lower academic achievement scores. They also have a higher trajectory for high school dropout. So that's why both the governor and the Department of Education have really stressed the importance of students coming to school every day and on a consistent basis. One of the things that we look at for chronic absenteeism is that they have a benchmark that's established both at the federal and the state level. So last year, the state level was fifteen percent. So you want to make sure that your school had fifteen percent or lower when it came to chronic absenteeism. The benchmark has been changed now to eleven percent. There is one exception, students with disabilities, that's at twelve percent.
Have a question. Can you describe or define how, what's the difference between excused and unexcused? And is there a scale to differentiate between students who consistently keep up their work and their grades, even though they're absent, versus those who don't?
So Virginia.
That's two questions. Sorry about that.
So Virginia code gives very specific guidelines for what's excused. So for example, we have a large military population in our county. So with the military compact, families who, when a, when a service band or service woman is coming back from deployment or going on to deployment, they're allowed to take time out. And those days are usually excused for them to spend time with that service individual before they're deployed or when they come back. Some other things such as medical, religious observance, there are different things which the code specifies. And then, of course, unexcused would be anything that there's no, you don't have any notification why the student was absent. We do look at both academic impact, though, because when students miss significant time from school for an excuse, they're not able to make up those assignments. And even if they try to catch up, they've missed that face-to-face instruction with a teacher and with students.
I guess the reason I was asking, and this actually goes back to when I was teaching full-time, is there a difference between those students who are absent for a family trip? Say there's a family reunion with great-grandparents and whatever. That they're away on a family trip, but they've made sure that they've kept up their grades, their grades are already decent in school, they've kept everything up, and there's no basic loss of learning during that time. Is that considered excused or unexcused for a trip like that? And who makes that determination?
So in the student handbook for, if it's a predetermined trip, the family is asked to work with the building principal. So if they are going on a family, for family reunion or a family trip sometime in the school year, they can get permission beforehand from the principal. Then we usually, as you said, provide makeup work and a. Then, we usually, as you said, provide makeup work and assignments before they leave and when they come back. One thing we do ask our families, though, we try to publish the school division calendar ahead of time so their families can try to cluster their vacations during natural breaks that we have during the school year to try to prevent that interruption of learning.
Right. Thank you.
But, but also, as you were sharing, chronic absenteeism includes both excused absences, unexcused, and then, out-of-school suspension. So, all those are put into that equation.
So, even if they're excused, if they have above a certain amount that they've missed, even if it's an excused absence, it still counts against them?
Yes, ma'am. It's still considered chronically absent.
And, and we're bound by law with that, with the federal and the state issues, is that?
So, it's a part of the accountability framework. So, what they do, there's a framework now. It used to be in the past, it was credibility, and so, they would have the reports in the school profile report. Now, they have a school performance framework where they include this as part of the overall equation to determine if a school division is, a school is on track, off track, distinguished. They have different categories. I believe Mrs. Beasley had given a presentation and Dr. Skinner earlier this year.
Thank you very much.
So, one of the things we try to do is we use a structure called multi-tiered seminar supports. It's a research-based framework where we look at, for tier one, if schools partner with families and we have clear and consistent expectations for attendance, then usually eighty to eighty-five percent of our students will attend school on a consistent basis and will not be chronically absent from school. We will have, though, at tier two, some students, even when we have these clear expectations, they may require some targeted interventions to support attendance. And then, finally, we have a few at tier three. Those are students who need more intensified services. In many cases, they are on an attendance plan, or they have to have court involvement for attendance. For the dashboard that we could, that we use for our school division, I'll go into detail to explain what, how the dashboard is recorded. So, this first category on the dashboard really looks at overall attendance. So, we can see our daily attendance, monthly attendance, and then, the percentage of students who had an unexcused absence for the division. The other part of our dashboard looks at, I'm sorry. Just going backwards. Okay, sorry. Yeah. The other part of our dashboard looks at, for each school, so we have it listed. So, you can see for every school, their daily attendance. And you can see how many of their students at this point of the school year have zero to four unexcused absences, five to nine, or ten or more. At the very bottom of the screen, you can actually look at our division daily attendance. And you can see that there were certain peaks. So, right here, this is the area right around Thanksgiving break where we had the two days of school, and then, we were out for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. We did see a peak in absenteeism right before Thanksgiving. The same thing when we were here for December, we saw a small peak right before the winter break. And then, finally, we look at chronic absenteeism information. And we can see from our reporting categories, the percentage of students who are chronically absent. This allows our schools to provide interventions targeted for those specific individual students. When we look at our elementary data, we can see a very similar trend. We can see that for, for elementary school students, there are two groups of focus. All the areas that you see grayed out are right at the benchmark of that eleven percent. We have slightly above that for economically disadvantaged, our students with disabilities. And those are populations that our students, our schools are working on to make sure that they had the proper interventions, reaching out with parents, working with staff, also working with our professional staff, which are our school social workers and counselors. For our middle schools, there was two identified areas as well. So, we're focusing for middle school students, for our Black or African-American students, which is slightly above the benchmark when we took this data at the semester turn, our economically disadvantaged students, and also, our students with disabilities. And then, for our high school data, you can notice that for high school, the unexcused absences are a little bit higher than it was for the division average, also for elementary and middle. And that is something that our schools have been actively working on to address that and also trying to partner with parents. When we go into more detail with that, we noticed that there are a few more reporting categories which we are focusing on. One, of course, economically disadvantaged students with disabilities, but also our Caucasian or white students, Black, African-American, and Hispanic students, focusing on those populations as well. When we tried to drill down to find out what was the most frequent reason for absences during the first semester at our high schools, we noticed that unexcused, which would be one of the reasons why it would be referred over for truancy. But then, behind that is sick. There was a lot of students who had many sick days during the first semester, which you can find from the data. Next is appointments. Many of these were either medical appointments. We had several seniors who are starting to go off to colleges. And so, some of those appointments were pre-arranged, absences for them to go to college business. Some of the things that were interesting, students who were running late, so they missed a significant part of the day. We also had some parent early dismissal, and of course, medical was one of the last at the top, most frequent. So, I'm going to transition from chronic absenteeism over to truancy. So, for our truancy data, if we followed the national model, we would expect eighty-five percent of our kids to not be truant from school, missing five or more unexcused. In York County, for the first semester, we were at ninety-two percent of our students were considered not truant. We had about five percent that had five to nine unexcused absences, and only two percent that had ten or more unexcused absences. Over the last three years, we've been seeing a steady decline, and that goes back to the work of our schools, really talking with our families and using a lot of family engagement time to focus on good attendance at school to make sure they're notifying the main offices they're absent. On our school website, we made some changes so that now, families can just click on a button on the website and can submit an absentee note, and it goes directly to the main office. So, by doing some of those interventions, you can see-
I'm fucking like the true high school parent.
And so, we've seen a marked decrease in the number of students who have been truant from F Y twenty-three to F Y twenty-five. We saw a significant decrease in our elementary schools, dropping from last year from one sixty-four down to one forty-four. Same thing for our middle school students.
Significant.
From five thirty-two to one sixty-five. Now, high school has kind of plateaued, and so, we're still focusing on that, as I shared in the last slide. That's, that's been one of our challenges because we have a wide range. We have everything from freshmen to seniors who are at different places. And so, trying to make sure that we're keeping them encouraged and making sure that we are doing interventions and make sure that they have rigorous instruction to make them want to come to school, as well as connections to school. One of our biggest things that we focus on is students who are connected to the life of the school tend to come to school on a more frequent basis. And so, making sure our students are connected with sports, activities, and clubs. So, they are, have that vested interest in to come to school.
Well, and I know in our high schools, having the bump here, you're just going to get to it, the student connection coaches. We know that that intervention has proven successful at all of our high schools, that's for sure.
I want to highlight something here because I don't want to lose, it's appropriate, I think, in that I get asked questions or people just make random comments, you know, why do we have all these people working in the school division? You know, we, we should cut, we need to cut positions, you know? They don't understand the bigger picture. But when you look at these positions and the decrease it has brought in getting kids to school, getting them more connected, a, a teacher and a principal don't have, just have all that time to pour into that. So, you need other resources. So, then, you get your student connection coach. You get your, you know, social worker interventions in there. I mean, it's, it's everybody, all hands on deck. Like, you need resources to do it, and resources cost money.
Yeah.
But it's, it's producing results.
Absolutely. And I would add, those aren't full-time positions, those student connection coaches. That's a-
It's like, you know, when you think about who those people are, the principals work really closely with those.
You know, and they're handpicked who we want in those roles, and it's a, it's a small stipend position.
But I just wanted to highlight that because it is, you know, and who forever is listening out there, that, you know, we, we put these things in place. There is a little bit of a cost or, you know, associated with it. But it's producing the results that we want or that the state wants us to have or whatever. So, they're working. And if we didn't have them, we probably, you know, these, this is a different generation. I mean, you know, let's face it, if I didn't have a choice, my mom would look at me and say, if I said I was sick, she'd look and say, you don't look sick. Get to school. And I, you know, I could have a fever, but it was like, go to school, you know? So, it was different. You know, we don't have that same, the generation's different.
Well, and not to mention the fact that now, within, especially the elementary schools, so much of the admin's time is taken up with discipline.
Yeah.
You know? I mean, it's, it's, I don't see how they get their job done, quite frankly.
And we, again, different generation. You didn't, you didn't want the school to call home.
No.
It's very different then. So, just saying. Okay, sorry, I didn't, I just felt it was, it was apropos at that time to make that comment.
And Madam Chair, that was a good segue into what I'm going to discuss. So, I'm just going to go through just some of the interventions and structures we do have in place to support our students. We, I will talk through the student connection coach position, and Dr. Shandor shared a little bit, but I'll give you a little bit more information. The Department of Education had actually given us a, an option called the flexible in-person instructional loss, time recovery approach, and I'll go through that. We also have a division-level attendance intervention team. Every school has a school-based attendance team, which is required by Virginia Code, that you have to have. Also, our school social workers, I'll share that. That's one of the budget priorities that the board has, over time, has added, a social workers. We started out, when I first was in the division, about two or three for the division. We now have up to six. And so, they are able to work more closely with zones and with students. And then, our assessment and compliance coordinators, they also provide a valuable intervention as well. So, our student connection coaches, one of the good things, they, they are totally funded through Title IV grant money as well as the all-in funds that Governor Youngkin and the Virginia Department of Education provided. So, that is no economic impact to our school division, but it make a powerful impact with the lives of our students. So, that is funded for grants. And as Dr. Shandor was sharing, these are usually full-time staff members. And so, this is one of their add-on duties. Instead of having a duty period, their duty period is to work with students as student connection coaches, or they do after-school and before-school interventions. And typically, the Code of Virginia required that we have some type of early intervention before student gets the five unexcused absences. So, they work very closely with our attendance secretaries. So, if a student was out for three days with no note of notification, they reach out to the family. They try to find what was going on. In some cases, they found out that some students maybe have some death in the family or different things. They're also able to provide that support for those families. And then, if students really aren't connected to school at all, they try to encourage them to get involved in some type of activity. They use something called the Check and Connect Program Framework. They come from the University of Minnesota, but that's a database program which looks at tracking student attendance, student participation, after-school activities, and academics. It's a spreadsheet where they can go through and they can track by a daily basis. You know, are, is a student coming to school? Have they been having positive interactions? Are they passing all their courses? And they use that to try to determine how to communicate with families and bring them a part of that process. Yes, ma'am?
On the early intervention, so it's basically, they're just calling the parents, following up that way, sending emails, is that what early intervention, or there are other activities with it?
So, they do a variety of things. So, that, one of the things is trying to talk, call parents and get them involved. But one of the things that the grant requires in Title IV is that they are also making positive connections. So, some of our student connection coaches take students on college visits to try to get them to see, you know, these opportunities, if you come to school every day, that some of the outcome could be that you could go to college, and this is what it would be like. They bring in speakers in some of our schools. Many of them, like I said, they really work on that program to track, to make sure that they're on track with their grades and attendance. And if they are not connected to some activity, they do that. Some of our connection coaches, like at Tab Middle School, they also have like after-school mentor program where they're trying to work with students so that they do feel like they have an advocate with adults in the school building. So, they serve several purposes, but primarily, it is attendance, but also to be an advocate for the student and keep them connected.
Thank you.
Like, and one of the good examples here, this is York Town Elementary School. So, their S E C worked with their A C C to have a, a student, I mean, a parent breakfast. And so, they invite parents in to focus on academics, to focus on attendance. And as you can see, they tried to make sure that it was a family-centered event so that they could hone on, you know, and usually, they said breakfast is the easier time to get families. And it's hard to get them to come back for dinnertime or for lunch, but they said they can usually get them in the morning. And so, that's one of the activities they were, found very successful. They've done several of these over the course of the year. And their data shows that this had a powerful impact on attendance. Our assessment and compliance coordinators, they chair the school-based multidisciplinary attendance team. And as you can see in the picture here, they work very closely with families and staff to develop improvement plans. So, if a student has missed five or more unexcused absences, they're required to do a, a plan that talks through interventions, what were some of the barriers? And then, they implement it and they follow through. In some cases, they do have to refer the families over to the attendance officer for the division if those interventions are ineffective. However, their goal is to not have to refer students to court, but they're trying to make sure that families are supporting us and making sure their children come to school.
And these are for unexcused absences?
Yes, ma'am, unexcused. As I shared, the Department of Education provides us an option. So, you can hold a before, after, or Saturday school session with students to help them recover time. So, if they have missed days, they have excessive absences. This does not change their actual daily attendance, but it does change chronic absenteeism. For every three hours that a student stays for flexible in-person learning, we can recapture one full day of chronic absenteeism for an absence. Now, the caveat to that is that it must be with a licensed teacher, and it must be directly aligned to the Virginia standards of learning. So, it has to be either math, science, you have math and science, English, or social studies, as well as it has to be in-person. So, I know that some schools have wanted to do a virtual option, but they stress that is, students learn best when they have in-person instruction. And plus, if they have been missing time from school, it was more beneficial to have them in-school for these sessions. And so, we track that information, and we're able to calculate that. So, in the data that I showed before, that does not include the hours of flexible learning that people have recovered. But we keep a spreadsheet at every school, and that information will be added into the system. So, at the end of the year report, that report will look, will not look the same way that when I just showed it to you because that is not including those hours of recaptured time.
That in-person three hours, is that done like, like on a Saturday? How, how do you get that in? Because they can't do it during their regular school day. So, how do you get that in?
So, some schools, yeah, so some schools have those Saturdays of success. But for the most of our schools, they have been using the after-school methodology. So, we have activity buses usually on certain days during the week, particularly, and that's from elementary all the way to high school. So, they just try to schedule it. So, we know that some students have to stay for clubs or sports. So, they try to do it on those days that they're not staying for those activities, and they keep them for that time, and then, they work with them, and they're used to capture that, that time.
Now, is the licensed teacher, is that also a classroom teacher? Or is this an additional teacher who comes in?
Uses as a classroom teacher. So, they have a rotation, and that's something that we've received some grant funding from the all-end grant that we received from the Department of Education. So, we use that fund to provide stipends or payments for those students to stay.
That was my next question.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, we have very dedicated staff that, you know, would volunteer, but it's better when we have the funds that we can actually give them compensation for staying.
Absolutely. Thank you for doing that.
We shared also, our school social workers, they also serve in that multidisciplinary team for schools, and they conduct home visits. They visit for families who have excessive absences to make sure there are any barriers. But also, they connect them with resources in our community. And our least, uh, school social worker, Mrs. Kotman, she does a great job of filling in those gaps because, as you know, we have certain social workers that are assigned to buildings. But she will also go out, she goes to several of our community providers and try to make sure that we're aware of the resource in our community for those families.
I have another question on that with, with the social workers. If they're going, if they're going to the homes, do they, do they make arrangements obviously with the parents? Or do they just, you know, show up, I need to check your home? Or how is, how is that handled? And, you know, I'm looking at the legality of it.
Traditionally, they will reach out to the parents and call first before they come to the home and schedule an appointment. If it's a crisis situation, they're trying to get more information, they always would take another party with them. So, many times, it might be the social worker and the school counselor. But usually, the families they already have a relationship with, they usually don't just, don't just appear at someone's doorstep. They normally have a pretty, a pretty schedule, I mean, a pretty, a pretty refined schedule for who they're going to visit, the time of day, and what's the purpose of that meeting.
They're not CPS.
Right.
They don't function as a CPS officer.
Yeah, that's what, someone had asked me about this when, when they saw that, so that's why.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Well, no, ma'am, they're, they're not there for punitive reasons. Usually, they're there because the family has asked them to come. Or like, if a child had just been missing for several days, and they've made several phone calls and can't get a hold of the family, they might come by to do a wellness check to see if the child's okay or if their family has moved. But it's never of a punitive nature, more of a supportive nature.
Great. Thank you.
And then, at the division level, on the school-based level, we do have a tennis intervention team. So, at the division level, we track and monitor data. So, the, the dashboard that I showed you earlier, that's one of the metrics that we do look at at the division level because we need to see if we need to provide additional professional development, support for training for our school-based teams. Here's a picture of the York High School team. They're working very closely. They're looking at student data. They're pulling up their chronic absenteeism reports and student truancy. And what they do is they partner, they decide what type of interventions they need to put in place. And that is across our whole division at all of our schools. We also are fortunate, we have the York County Juvenile Youth Services. They have partnered with our school division. So, if you have a student who is missing an excessive amount of days from school, they will actually partner with us. They also use the Check and Connect Program, and they will assign a mentor. Now, the only caveat, the student has to be between ages twelve and seventeen. But they will partner with that family if there's an issue with transportation, an issue if there's some job insecurity. They try to work with the family to provide wraparound services. And that's something that- And that's something that we can't necessarily provide, but they're able to do that because of their role.
And how long does that assist on blast?
Usually until, so, but they usually come to the intervention team meetings, so it'll be written into the plan. So sometime it's just a couple of months. There's actually some mentors that have been with kids for a couple of years, because they've been working with that family and cycling through while they've been in our school system. And again, that's also a free service, but it's done through our county, the juvenile services. So thank for this opportunity to provide an update on the strategic plan for student attendance, available for any additional questions.
I wanted to add one thing. I wanted to see if Ms. Barry wanted to add anything, because we have, you got to see a lot of interventions, you got to see a lot of data. You got a lot, you got to see a lot of data headed in the right direction, which we're really proud of, all the hard work of all of our, not only our staff members, but our kids are working hard and our families are getting engaged. So we're really proud of those results. However, there are times when, you know, it doesn't go that way. So Ms. Barry, can you talk a little bit about the, when we get involved with court services?
Well, yes, when the interventions aren't successful, it does go to the truancy officer. And she takes it to our multidisciplinary truancy team that we have established with mental health on there. We have probation on there, we have juvenile services, different healthcare providers. And we will look and see if there's anything else that we could offer to that family. And if there's nothing, then the decision will be made to file a petition with the court. So if the child needs a supervision petition, and that's a petition that I take to court, and I basically represent the school division in those cases to have the court order the child to go to school. If that still doesn't work, then I'll file a criminal show cause petition against that child so that they'll go to detention if they don't go to school. The only problem is, the General Assembly has kind of tied our hands now as we're limited to seven days of detention for a violation based on each court order. So seven days of detention is not a whole lot. Kids can easily do that, and then they come back and they still don't go to school. So unfortunately, they have decreased the punitive nature of what we can do to try and encourage kids to go to school. But we keep trying.
I guess I have another question for Dr. Butler. With a strategic plan, and I think it's great showing some of the improvements on those slides over, you know, the, the different years. Do we have, say, a stair step saying in six months, we want to see this much improvement for this particular year? And we're gonna check that and say, yes, we've not only met it, we've gone beyond it. Or no, we're kind of stagnant, we're not seeing an improvement, so we need to adjust some things. Do we have that with the strategic plan that has identified steps and when to check it to see, you know, how we're doing on our goals?
So we've aligned our strategic plan with the federal accountability standards. So for, for chronic absenteeism, the answer is yes. We're, we're trying to focus to make sure, because eventually it's gonna go down to 10%. Not, so it started at 15%, it went down to 11%. Next year it'll be at 10%. Obviously, they want 10% of your school, I mean, you should have no more than 10% of your students chronically absent. So yes, so the way that the plan was predicated so that we will match and that we'll parallel the federal credit accountability standards. For truancy, it's a very safe, and we follow that model. We would prefer that we not have any kids truing and going to court. And so that's always been the aim, but however, we try to make sure that we are providing the right kind of supports. We go back to, again, we should not have more than 85% of our kids that need to have a attendance improvement contract, and definitely no more than 5% that would have to go to court because of that.
I just didn't know if we, we actually had a stair step to improve on that 85%. You know, obviously, that first one that you showed was 90 something. That are, are we looking at, we want to improve, you know, and I've asked Dr. Shandor about this also, to have stair steps of after four months, we want to see it up here, you know, that we're maintaining this success. You know, are we reaching this, or have we slipped somewhat and we need to make sure, rather than just do it year by year?
Well, we don't do it year by year. We do it by month. We, we, again, the data you saw today was just by the first semester. So when you, when you go back to those charts and you can see that the stair steps decreasing, that's obviously really good work. And I think what makes the strength of our strategic plan, or one of the biggest strengths is, you know, this data is being worked on at the school level, at the grade level. So you, when you're looking at across third grade at a particular elementary school, like what you got tonight was big picture from elementary, middle high. However, where the work is happening and where sort of the rubber meets the road is that, at those individual teams and those individual schools with those individual phone calls, getting those parents involved and making sure they're involved in school. And as we continue to get kids engaged in school and their families getting engaged in school, they're obviously gonna come to school, which is obviously our goal. So we, no, we have not sent, you know, arbitrary, we're gonna increase by 3%, 5%, 6%, or decrease by those percentages. And, and in a school division like your county, that's sometimes even more challenging. Because if you have a grad rate at 98 and you have an attendance rate at 98, you know, you, you, there's a really small margin there of, of where you're trying to move. The other part is, is understanding from year to year, like you, you may see the numbers on the screen, but we're a pretty transient area. So, you know, with the military and kids moving in and out. So each year, some of these situations at these schools are drastically different from year to year, or every two years, right? It just really just depends. But the, the way that you get this work moving is you have somebody lead it like Dr. Butler, come up with a solid process, make sure the whole division is, is, is sort of rowing at the, at the same, you know, the same pace so that we're getting those results.
Just also, there's another question. We are tracking outcomes on our, obviously, on our, do we have a way to track what's been inputted to get those outcomes? Kind of like number of interventions, calls, emails, and stuff like that? Or is that something that it's not being tracked?
Oh, it's tracked. Well, I mean, when I think about.
To know what's working.
Yeah, I mean, really, but, but when I think about like OGR meetings, right? So when I think about our on-time graduation rate meetings from September, October, as we go through the whole year. I mean, yes, they're being tracked, the counselors and principals at the school, I mean, Karen's on those meetings, and Dr. Butler, and Dr. Skinner, and, and Michelle and others in the room, and Lisa's who's here. It's messy, because you'll see scratch marks and you'll see everything else, because, you know, certain kids were behind, and then we caught seven of them up. So that number might look like this at the beginning of the year, and then the whole year, it's decreasing. And you can't really put your finger on one intervention that's working, because all of our kids are different, and they all need different things. You know, there's different situations, so, but 100% is tracked. Yep. Did I miss anything with that, Erin? All right, do you wanna move to, we can transition to your next presentation? So now we're gonna talk about a real fun topic. We're gonna talk about student behavior. Dr. Butler?
This is a strategic plan update for student behavior, which also follows our supportive culture. And for the presentation, I will, this is very similar to attendance. I'll kind of go through the methodology and the measures that we use to capture student behavior and the administrative response to that behavior. We'll look at the first semester from FY '24 and FY '25 this year. Also share some of the structures we do put in place and respond into student behaviors. So Virginia Code requires that every year, we have to submit to the Department of Education all the events of student behavior and how did administrators respond to those behaviors. The methodology they use now, it used to be the DCV or the Discipline Crime and Vows Report. Several years ago, they switched over to what they call Sbar, which is Student Behavior and Administrative Response. And that's their official data collection tool. That information is also available under the Department of Education, so you can actually pull our data by going onto VDOE's site. In addition to that, we also have federal requirements. So under the Every Student Succeed Act, or ESSA, we have to report how many students receive an out-of-school suspension. Under the Gun-Free Schools Act of 1994, we also have to submit to the government how many of our students were in violation of firearm violations, so knives that are larger than three inches, any type of ammunition, weapons, guns, those type things. And then for individuals with disabilities or IDEA, any student with a disability that was removed from the school environment, either for a short-term suspension or a long-term suspension, that data also has to be reported to the federal government. So those are the metrics that we use for collecting data as well. So we compare our data for our data dashboard that we use for our division. We look at how many of our students have never had an office managed dis- referral. So that means that they're able to go to class, they follow what teachers ask them to do, they self-manage their own behavior, and they actively participate and engage. Then we look at the students who did receive an office dis- referral, but it was not something that resulted in out-of-school suspension. It was more of an in-school intervention. It could have been detention. It could have been placed in the ATS room for a period of time. It could be a full day of in-school suspension. But they were able to stay at school. It's just that they weren't in the regular classroom setting, or there was some type of disciplinary intervention. And then we also look at how many of our students were suspended from school for out-of-school suspension. We use a very similar model to, for attendance, as we use the MTSS model. And that says that if we have very clear and specific school language, procedures, and expectations, then 80% of our students should be able to self-manage and will not require any type of administrative intervention. You've probably been to many of our schools, and you've seen, like in the York Zone, they soar, which is safe, orderly, respectful students. And so that's one of the things that they have, so they have clear expectations for when students are in the hallway, when they're in the restroom, when they're in the classroom, how are they soaring? Same thing in the Tab Zone, they use roar, which is respect. And then up in the Bruton Zone, they have two, they have the Stars over at Waller Mill, and then at McGruder, they have Paws. And they, and they follow the same thing over at Bruton and at Queens Lake. So by using those type of very clear expectations and explicit instructions, 80% to 85% of our students should never have to go to the office for office disciplinary referral. However, even when you have that in place, you still are gonna have some students who are gonna need an intervention. And so usually around 15% or 10%. And then you have a few students who need more intensified services. We hope no more than 5%. Some of these students might have to have a functional behavior assessment, because they have behavior that you really need someone to track that data. Or you might have some type of individualized intervention like a IEP, or you might have some type of behavior plan for those students. We look at our school division data for the first semester. We can see that 91% of our students did not have an office managed referral, meaning that they were able to stay in the classroom and manage their own behavior. We had almost 6%, 5.8%, which did have an office dis- referral, but it resulted in some type of in-school intervention. And on the dashboard, you can see that the color purple also matches with classroom removal, alternative sanctions, and then school suspension. And then we had about 3% of our students who did have to have out-of-school suspension. And then at the bottom, you can see that gold box that shows what were those behaviors that resulted in an out-of-school suspension.
I have a question on this slide. I know when I was looking at the PowerPoint, there's no way to expand it to see what's cut off on the right side. There are descriptions, like behaviors that impede what, behaviors related to, where it has the ellipsis, the dot, dot, dot. You can't read the rest of it. Is there somewhere that everyone can access to see what?
Yeah, actually on the dashboard, if you go in and, if you click on the eye above where the, not on the presentation slide. However, in, in, on the, on the dashboard, when you click on that, yes, it, it gives you all those descriptions. So if you go on our website and pull up our dashboard and click on those, you'll be able to just read the full description.
And then I will also, during the presentation, I'll try to pull out and show what, what the top, top five behaviors for those categories for the grade levels, the school levels as well.
Thank you.
So when we look at our elementary school students, higher than the division average, 93% of our kids did not require an administrator intervention. We have about almost 5% that did receive some type of intervention that was in-school, and almost 2% that received an out-of-school suspension. For our middle school, very similar, 90% of our students did not have an office managed dis- referral. Close to 6% did have some type of intervention in school, and then we had 4% that never seen an out-of-school suspension. And then for high school, it almost mirrored middle school, except for you had a little bit more students who did receive some type of office managed intervention. We had almost 7.4%, and then we had 2.47% that received an out-of-school suspension.
Is this related to our cell phone policy we have?
That's, we're gonna look at that. So I, I wanted, we wanted to drill down and look at that too. So on the next slide, I will show you what those, what was those top five. One of the positive things that we look at, we looked at discipline trends for the last three years for the first semester. And you can see that there was a, so it was a, 2,524 office referrals back in 2023. It went up a little bit, but then it went back down. So staying consistent, however, one of the good things is that the number of students who received an office dis- referral, you see there was a decrease from what it was last year, however, it's a little bit higher than it was two years ago. And then the number of students who received at least one out-of-school suspension, from 783 back in FY '23, to 416 last year in FY '24, down to 337 FY '25.
Why do you think it's pretty well-stayed, you've, you've got some rises and falls, but it's pretty even stagnant across the board? Is there a reason, is something not working, or is something just?
I think part of it is when you look at the data, remember, you have to remember what you're dealing with. When you have 90, at the elementary level, 93% of your kids don't receive, they have none. So, so take them out, middle 90%, and high school, I think, was 90 or 91. So that number is, is pretty, is pretty small that you're working with to begin with. So.
And I'm just, I'm just looking at these numbers here. These are numbers of students, correct?
Right. The number of students or number of incidents?
So the top one was number of incidents. So that's the number of actual.
Oh, number of referrals, okay, number of referrals. Then the second one is number of students, and the third one is number of students.
With an out-of-school suspension. And during the presentation, I will kind of go into detail and share some of the work that schools do. It, it's unique to every student, every population. So our teams work to figure out what's trends and patterns for student behavior so they can respond. So that's why you might see ups and downs, because depending on what the concern is at, at school, it depends on how the administrators respond to that behavior. And so now, when I go into the different school levels, I'll try to explain that. So we looked at our data, looking at the trend for the last three years. You can see like for elementary school, you can see there was an increase in the number of office dis- referrals that were submitted, FY '23 to FY '25. However, at middle school, you can see that last year, there was a peak at 758, and then it's gone down to 640 for the first semester this year. And in high school, there's been a steady decline from three years ago, from 1,113 back in FY '23, down to 884 in FY '25. So when we look at what are the top five behaviors that resulted in office dis- referral, the top one was interfering with learning in the classroom with 366. Behind that was shoving, pushing, striking, or biting another student. Unexcused tardiness to class, refusal to comply with requests from staff, and then reckless behavior. When we look at for elementary school, we can see that shoving, pushing, striking, or biting another student was one of the highest ones that we had for ODRs. We look at interfering with learning in the classroom, reckless behavior, non-written threats. At the beginning of the school year, I know that there was a, a heavy focus on making sure we were talking to parents and students about making threats to classmates and even posting things online. And so we see that data there for this first semester. And then of course, striking staff. Striking staff is a little different from assault and battery. That's just wherever a student is dysregulated and they hit a staff member, but not to injure. So there's no injury in this, but there was some type of physical contact that occurred. For our middle school, you can see interfering with learning in the classroom was the highest number, followed by shoving, pushing, striking, or biting another student, refusal to comply with staff requests. This goes back to what Ms. Privates was asking about with some of our cell phone policies. That's a variety of things, but that's just where staff asked a student to do something and they did not comply. It could be phone, it could be moving down the hall with different, different items. Because of our middle schools and they, because of the maturity level, we usually see this unwanted physical contact, which comes up at the middle school level, which has to be addressed, and then non-written threats. And our high school is a little different dynamic. So the highest at the high school is unexcused tardiness to class. So they made it to school, but for some reason they didn't make it to class on top. So that was one of our highest there. Then of course, interfering with learning in the classroom, and it goes back to student not going to assigned class. So again, they're in the building, but for some reason they did not go to their assigned class, and they were apprehended by school officials, refusing to comply with staff, and then finally, student unauthorized area of campus.
That was ones of the students not going to the assigned class.
Yes, because you can see for high school, majority is attendance. We don't see, again, striking or hitting by that time, or biting, not for our high school students. Now, and then when we look at the grade levels that we try to focus on, you can see that our ninth graders really had some struggles when it came to behavior on the first semester. They are the highest in the division when it comes to office dis- referrals. We can see at middle school, there was a pattern, which was, we had to double-check the numbers, but it was almost even across the board. Kind of a plateau for middle school behaviors. And at elementary, we did see some spikes. We saw for first grade and for third grade, there were some behaviors at those grade levels that were a little bit, the other grade levels, and then of course kindergarten as well. When we look at the office dis- referrals that resulted in out-of-school suspension, we can see again that sixth graders, the most, the suspensions that had the high frequency was at the sixth grade, then followed by seventh grade. And then we also see at elementary, there was. And then we also see at elementary, there were several students who received out of school suspension, same as high school. Uh one of the things that we do look at for um ODRs is a risk ratio. And that's just to see, um we would, we would expect to see that all students, if in equal circumstances, would have the same probability of receiving an office disper referral. Uh when you see anything that's two or higher, that means that we have to kind of dig down in the data to see why are they two or three times more likely than their peers uh to get an office disper referral. And that might cause us to do different interventions with those students or those populations. So that's something our sta- our schools always look at to make sure that we are responding to student needs. That's one of the things that Department of Education looks at. So if we have any population like for our students with disabilities, when they have um three times more likely than their peers to get office disper referral, we get a letter from VDO, we just say, well, what type of corrective actions are you taking to address those situations? We go ahead and we do those regardless because we monitor and look at that information. But that is something that we do report to the Department of Education. So when we look at our systems that we use to respond to behavior, we have a MTSS leadership team at the division level, so I can share some of the interventions we do there. Um you see a picture here, this is um one of our school-based intervention teams from their elementary school. They meet on a regular basis and I'll talk a little bit more about what they do on a monthly basis. And then we are fortunate that we get direct support from the Virginia Department of Education. We're part of Cohort Five, which is for the Virginia Tier System Supports called the VTSS Program. And that's to support schools when it comes to student behavior because student behavior is not just something unique to York County. That's something across the Commonwealth, and so they're trying to make sure that we have resources and support to respond to that.
And you said this is just a parent mentor in picture, this is a lot of people.
Right, oh yeah, the the hope is, so that's a training that we had this past summer for all of our school-based teams. Uh that picture up front was just their team working, but all of our schools have a team very similar that work with our students.
I have a question, and you may address this later, um and if you do, I'll just wait. It seems that the big weight is on interfering with learning in the classroom. How are we supporting the teachers? Because I know as a teacher, that just gets really frustrating, especially when you have chronic students that's the same one on a regular basis type of thing disrupting the class. As well as how are we supporting those other students in the classroom whose learning is being inhibited by the other student who is disrupting things?
I think I addressed that on one of my next slides, but if I don't, I will come back to that question. But yeah, but that that is something that our school-based teams, they look at, they try to drill down to see, are there patterns, are there certain classrooms, are there certain students? And then what are the interventions we're using to address that? Because students can't learn in chaos, so if we don't make interventions to address those situations, you do have learning loss, so that's why it's so important.
Well, and I know the teachers have that flow chart to follow, to do everything. But you get to a point, I know from teaching, it's like trying to follow the flow chart. It's just, just settle down so that we can get on with this. I just know the frustration level with teachers, um how difficult it is when you have a student who's disrupting the class.
And that's why we try to use it, well, not try, but we use a team approach at all of our levels. So uh we have, you know, our school counselors, our specialists who specialize in behavior interventions. We have at elementary school, our RBTs who are technicians when it comes to behavior. So they try to use a team approach to try to provide a specific target intervention for those students so that they can go back to a uh disruption-free classroom environment. But but again, they have to have data for that, so that's one of the reasons why we do track and monitor the number of offices for referrals and then what was the behavior that caused them to get an office referral. And so then at the, and at the division level, similar to what you were asking Ms. Fairman, we have a division-level team and it's a cross-section of different stakeholders. We have everyone from the instruction department, my colleagues, Dr. Kago and Mrs. Head, uh and Mrs. Beasley also. We also have of people who have expertise in behavior from our special education department, uh Mrs. Hopkins and some of her staff, as well as school-based staff. We have some teachers who are classroom teachers that are on that team, as well as some administrators and counseling, so the counselors, so that we can have a full picture of what's going on in the building versus what's going on at the division level. And we monitor behaviors, we look at on the number of infractions that are happening in the building. We look at what grade levels, we look at specific students. And we try to make sure we're looking at the whole child, so we look at attendance, behavior, school climate. So every year, staff and students take the school climate survey and we find out, you know, is there a perception that, you know, my school is not safe? Is there a perception that, you know, staff did not respond to student behaviors? So we look at all of that to see, you know, are there areas of concern? And then how can we provide professional development or can we provide interventions to address that behavior? And we also look at mental wellness, so we look at the number of risk assessments that are done by staff, as well as the number of threat assessments that are conducted in our building. And we use that data to develop training, we look at staff support, we also look at student support and interventions. And this goes back to a picture, this is some more of our school-based team. We see York High School and Bruton High School here. So at the school level, these teams of of teachers and counselors and administrators, they meet on a monthly basis and they review both student discipline and attendance data. And they implement school-wide rules, so they normally present to the school staff to say, like for the month of of January, these were our highest behaviors we saw at our school. And these are some of the things we recommend to make some changes. So if if the issue is on the playground, students are pushing and shoving each other, then they might say, hey, we need more supervision during recess, so we'll put more teachers out, or we need a more structured activity for kids. So instead of having the free-for-all and the blacktop, we're gonna have sign-up and we're gonna do three-on-three basketball. Those are things that they will implement. And then they'll go back and track the data to see, did that intervention stop the number of instances that happened on the playground? And if it didn't, then they had said, well, we have to have another hypothesis to figure out what is exactly is the problem. Or if it is one specific student, then they try to make sure that they're targeting that one student to give them the services they need. Uh they also try to create an incentive program to acknowledge students when they are doing the right thing. Uh and then they provide that feedback and they do problem-solving protocols to make sure, is this a school-based issue or is this a classroom-specific issue? And then if a teacher needs additional support with classroom management, what are some of the resources we need to help that teacher with? Do we need to provide the RBT in that classroom? Or do we need to ask for the counselor to come and provide some support? Uh but we try to work together as a team and they do all this by looking at data. It's a data-driven based on the infraction and the behaviors that they see.
What I think too, you know, to mention too is that the PBIS does not, is, does not mean, because if you're doing positive behavior intervention, it doesn't mean that you're negating the action of what they've done. Is that right? Like you're not saying, oh, you know, we're gonna send you to the office and you can talk with the principal and she'll give you a lollipop and send you back to class and it'll be okay, right? Like, that's not the concept of that.
No, so P, so PBIS is a small component of what MTSS um is set up to do. So when it comes to student behavior, the PBIS or Positive Behavior Intervention System, it is that incentive program for acknowledging when students are doing the right thing and giving them feedback. So we still have to have consequences, so when students violate the code of conduct, that's not PBIS. That is, you're gonna get a consequence because you violate the rules. But PBIS is more meant, um back when, uh back when No Child Left Behind was first started under the Bush administration, it was really meant to be that system where we supported students when they come to school, they self-manage, they show improvement in behavior, how do we acknowledge that and provide them and their family feedback? So that's what that was meant to do.
Celebrate, because we're always quick to jump on people across the board when they're not doing something right. But when they do something good, we fail to say, hey, you did that well. So that's kind of like what this is at the school level.
What type of incentives are are given?
So it depends, so many times, like at the high school, they'll give, like they call it the swag. Um I didn't wear mine today from York High School, but they have like little, um the blue fin, it has the Falcon on it and they say Falcon One. Um I know at some of the middle schools, they have those same things. Sometimes they have opportunities to go to certain um events after school. I know that Tab Middle School, they normally do like a semester dance or celebration for students. So you get invited if you hadn't had any infractions, so that's how they reinforce good behavior. If you've had infractions, then you can't go for this quarter, but hopefully next quarter, if you don't have one, then you can get an invitation to the next one. So it it's really, like I said, it's really a methodology so that they can really acknowledge and support those students who are self-managing, come to school on a regular basis and given their best in the classroom.
How long has that been implemented in YCSD?
So we've been doing that program probably for the last six years. I wanna, I'll go back and check, maybe a little longer than that, maybe longer.
I know as, when I was a counter, I was doing, I, it wasn't called PBIS, but that's the kind of stuff I would do with some of my frequent flyers is, hey, if you can, you know, achieve this through the week, you know, be good for the week and not get sent out of this classroom, then, you know, we'll have a little celebration in my office. Maybe I bake them a cake, grab some cookies or something like that, just to recognize that they did good. We didn't call it PBIS, but that's kind of what we're getting at here. So, and I think a lot of my, and at that time, a lot of my colleagues did that, so, because it helps. It was, it was a good thing to do.
And I think back, it used to be called Effective Schoolwide Discipline is what the name used to be back um years ago.
Yeah, the names have changed.
Right, and then it's morphed into uh PBIS. And then now, of course, they call it MTSS because they didn't want to emphasize. And I will say, some school divisions and across, they sometime they use that wrong and they equate PBIS with like no consequences or no discipline. And that's one of the reasons why we do have state support because they want to make sure that we're clear. You have to follow the code of conduct for both their school division and the state of Virginia. And PBIS is is not saying that we don't give kids consequences. It's just that we have to make sure that we are having some type of system that acknowledges students for showing progress and following rules and expectations.
And do we have that data showing that that progress or that improvement when implementing these different things?
So we would have to pull that from the school, but what schools try to do is so if students had infractions for the first quarter, then they look at how did the interventions work and then they look at second quarter. So that's something I could try to pull, but we don't, we don't track that necessarily. We try to look at recidivism, how many students have repeat violations. So we do look at that data, got you, so we can retract that.
All that's individualized anyway, yeah.
And that's one of the the value of our teams though, because they really at the ground level. Um they know the kids, they know the families, they know what works, they know which students are connected to school, which ones are not. And so they use that methodology. And then that's I share, the Virginia Department of Education, uh we have two coaches, one from the College of Women Mary. Her name is Dr. um Lorio Barstun. She used to actually be a special education teacher here in our division. Uh she works at Women Mary's T-TAC. And then we have Mike Cresco, who works for BCU. So they come in and they provide a professional development. If they notice there's concerns, they'll actually go into schools and provide mentorship and coaching for administrators and teachers on classroom management. Um all this is free, uh we get this through a grant funding through the Department of Education, so our professional development. So the summer institute that you saw um on the screen, that was paid through through grant funds. Um same thing with working with our schools, I have grant funds so that they can have people in the building that can really support this work and do data analysis and do reports. And they also provide us opportunities to get trained. So we are, we're part of the uh science, the implementator, the Implementation Science Academy through VDOE. And that allows us the opportunities to get um leadership, how to be better leaders, how can we better mentor? How can we better look at data? And then how can we make sure that we're not just doing things because we think it, it sounds good? But how are you actually looking at data to match up what interventions are effective versus outcomes? Because that's really, and they're, they're giving funds for this to be accountable for fidelity. They want to make sure that if we're giving you funds, how are you keeping data? How are you showing impact? And how are you making sure that students are being successful in the school environment? And so that's one of the benefits of being part of the cohort is that we get that um explicit training and hands-on support. Again, thank you for this opportunity to provide an update on student behavior. Um they'll bring questions at this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Waller, appreciate it. All right, we're going to um have a quick transition. We're gonna have um Dr. Kago, Dr. Evans, if you want to come to the table as well, as Ms. Head gets ready for her presentation. So um Ms. Christina Head, our Associate Director of Elementary Instruction and Academic Progress, is now going to provide you a summary with um our twenty twenty-five mid-year student performance on the Virginia Language and Literacy Screener System. Ms. Head.
Yes, good evening. So tonight, I will share the kindergarten through second grade data from our mid-year VOWS administration with our new early literacy screener um called VOWS. So with this presentation, I'm gonna give you an overview, review of the VOWS assessment. And then I'll speak to the differences between the mid-year and the fall um assessment. And I'll also show you the changes in the risk band ranges between those two um fall and mid-year assessments. And then I'll show you the data dashboard that will have the mid-year data, but also has the fall data, so you can see that comparison. And then after I show you the data, then I will tell you about some action steps at the division level that are taken with this data and also at the school level with teachers and what they do with the mid-year data. And so you might recall, back in November, I did a presentation about this new literacy screener and those data results from the fall administration. But before I share with you the mid-year, I just want to provide a quick recap for you and and our community um on the specifics of this new literacy screener. Um it is a state-provided screening tool that is called VOWS, which stands for the Virginia Language and Literacy Screener System. And it's administered in the fall, mid-year and then the spring to all of our kindergarten through second grade students and some identified third grade. And it measures the critical literacy skills and it's really designed to help us identify students that are at high risk for reading difficulties. And then it's a valuable data source for our teachers so that they can use this for instruction and also for intervention. And so the student scores from this assessments are calculated based on performance um across these code-based assessments that you see on the left. And the different weighted scale scores for each grade level indicate a student's overall VOWS band of risk. And there are three bands of risk, a low risk, moderate risk and high risk. And so the student's scores will all fall within these three bands of risk and all have instructional needs. And so let me remind you about the VOWS bands of risk. So students with scores that fall in the low-risk band, they are on target and should continue to receive high-quality um grade-level instruction. And those that have scores in the moderate-risk band, they need targeted and explicit um instruction in certain areas uh of their need. And then students that are at high risk, they are identified for significant um reading difficulties and the state requires them to have a student reading plan. And also, the state requires an additional two point five hours per week of intervention. And so with the mid-year assessment, um well, you may recall back in November, the fall VOWS assessment had a wide variety of subtests that the teachers would test the students on. But the mid-year's um VOWS assessment, which window opened for testing right when the students returned from winter break and then that window closed at the end of January. But this assessment is much shorter in length because it only assesses students on the code-based subtest. And then you might predict the mid-year assessment is much more rigorous than the fall assessment as students are expected to have learned some key literacy skills since that fall assessment. And then the risk bands ranges, those score ranges change at mid-year for each grade. And so let me show you an example of that, how that risk band changes. So here's the risk bands for first grade um for both fall and um mid-year. So let's take a look at the moderate risk bands. So here you can see that the fall, the risk bands for moderate risk was six oh four to six twenty-nine. And then in the mid-year, those increased to six thirty to six forty-five. And you look at the same um risk band ranges, let's think of a sample first grader. So a sample first grader in the fall, that first grader scored a six thirty-five, which falls in the low-risk band range. But at mid-year, that same first grader scored a six forty-three, which does show growth and progress. But because the risk bands move and change, that student is now in the moderate risk band range and has certain areas to shore up um with their literacy skills um to be successful. So now let's take a look at that um data from our mid-year assessment, starting with kindergarten. And so here you see the dashboard that I showed you back in November. Um you can see at the top left, there's the division um results. As well as the middle, you can see the schools' results and below that, the demographic groupings um results from fall. But then at the bottom left, you see here is our mid-year results. So you can see eight hundred and seven students were tested in the mid-year, which is more than the fall. And seventy-six percent of our kindergartners are now at low risk at the mid-year point, compared to thirty-nine percent in the fall. And then ten percent in the moderate risk and then fourteen percent at the high risk as compared to twenty-four percent from November. And so then on the right side of this dashboard, you can see the schools' results and then student demographic information at the bottom here. So look at all that green. That's, that's all that is low risk, it really made some improvement. I'd like to note again that for kindergarten, that fall window closed at very end of October, October thirty-first. So the growth you see here was a result from great instruction and student performance from just November and December because the testing window opened right after the break. So that's, that's a lot of progress you can see with our students. Um and our majority of our kindergartners now have the building blocks that they need for encoding and decoding um through this, for the second semester. And with our first grade data here, you can see the same dashboard for first grade with both fall and mid-year results. And nine hundred and nineteen students at mid-year, um which is a lot more than fall, took the assessment. And 919 students at mid-year, which is a lot more than fall, took the assessment. And 74% were at low risk compared to 55% in the fall. And again, you see the, the student progress, the green is increasing and the pink is decreasing and 14% moderate risk. And remember, moderate risk, the blue, it does not mean they're below. That just means that they have specific reading skills, they need a little bit of extra instruction, explicit instruction. And then 11% high risk compared to 16% in the fall. And again, on the right side of the dashboard, you can see the performance by the each school and our, our demographic information at the bottom. So this is also great progress for first grade. And I have to note that at mid-year, we noticed with this assessment, because it's new, remember, we weren't sure what was going to be on this assessment because it's new. Students in first grade were asked to no longer decode a simple word with like a short A. These words were more complex and required some deep word attack skills for first graders, such as SL blends and digraphs like CH, TH. They had to really do a lot of thinking. In addition, there was also one subtest that starts in first grade called the ORF. And that is reading fluency. It tests students on their fluency in reading. And it really, the data shows that our first graders are on track with fluency and they'll spend the next semester really in text and decoding books.
I have a question on this particular slide. And I know a lot of it, it may have to do with demographics of the particular schools. But looking at Bethel Manor, Mount Vernon, and that Seaford Elementary, they are significantly fewer at, you know, high risk. Is, is something different going on there or have they, have they figured out something that's really working that we need to share with?
Well, Bethel Manor, for example, at the very, in the fall, they were, only had five kids at low risk. And so they still have five, five kids at the mid-year, but they are also very transient in, in their school system and their school individually. So this data is very confusing because it's very much of, of the student's scores from the fall and the mid-year could be compared, but if they weren't here in the, in the fall and we don't have that score. So with Bethel Manor being very transient, it's very hard to, you know, attribute to that success there with them.
Well, and then, but still looking at then Mount Vernon Elementary and Seaford Elementary, they are also very low with the, the high risk. So that's great.
Right.
Is there something, you know, looking at that, how do we get that incredibly low score for the other elementary schools also?
Well, it's very individualized. So the student's scores are very specific to each student. So they have specific areas where they might be stronger and specific areas or subtests that they're weaker in. So it's very student-specific. And even, you know, we, we look at the reports that VOWS provides and they don't really, they don't provide us a report that shows where students are moving back and forth or trying to create one in-house, but they really don't have that information because they really want you as a student or as a teacher to look at those instructional indicators on each student. So they may be different for each school and each student. Very individualized. Okay. So moving on to second grade, here you can see our second grade dashboard showing second grade where 924 students were tested, which was more than the fall. And 71% at low risk compared to 46% in the fall, 15% moderate risk, and then 14% high risk, which compared to the 19% from the fall. And remember, this is just midpoint of the year. So this is good that they're making that progress and continue the second semester. And in the dashboard, you can see here the results for second grade by school demographics at the bottom. And we did find that the second grade mid-year assessment was much, much more rigorous than we expected. We really noticed that the, it was really a strong, heavy emphasis on vowel teams. Vowel teams are our long vowels when they're together, that's why they call them a team. So in order to be low risk, those students had to quickly determine and what that vowel is and how to really decode that word quickly. But we really noticed that was a heavy emphasis, so we know that now.
And these tests are all digital? They're all computerized?
Some is, some, some has it with paper, but it's really one-on-one with that student. Some is on the computer screen that they flash the words or decode and some is on paper.
Is that based on if they've been identified to need paper or can parent request?
It, it's really, only certain tests can be paper at all. And it's really when they have to write and then they have to, most of it's on the computer.
Okay.
And then the previous assessment, the POWS, that was the previous assessment, we noticed in second grade, they really gave students in second grade additional points on those lower skills and VOWS does not. So we really noticed that with that mid-year second grade assessment. And so this slide here is the same data, but this is just high risk. So you can see the kindergarten, first and second grade percentage high risk. And as previously mentioned, that students that are at high risk are required by Virginia Department of Education to have that 2.5 hours per week of intervention and also that student reading plan. And so those students that had that plan in the fall may need adjustments. They may, this data may show that they have different learning skills or they might have to change the intervention. So they have to meet with those, the team that supports the students. So if it's a student with disability, the special ed teacher will be there or an English learner teacher will be there. And they all meet to include inviting the parents. And so they meet and they make adjustments if needed. And then if a student was not at high risk in the fall, but they are at mid-year, a plan has to be developed. A plan of what they're going to do, how they're going to progress monitor and that 2.5 hours of intervention added. And then if a student was at, in the fall, high risk, but then they're not any longer right now, say they're at moderate or low risk, which is great, that student read plan has to continue. The state requires it to continue and to really check them so they don't fall back down to that.
Continue for how long? Just that year?
The whole year.
Just that year?
Yes, yes.
That particular grade level?
Which is good.
Yeah, because it'll be evaluated the next year.
Yes, the next fall.
Okay.
And so at the division level, we really use this fresh data to dig in and look at that by the schools examining the data by student all the way down. But we also had our English coordinator, Molly Brown, she really looked at, immediately met with schools on that data. If we saw something like you mentioned, Ms. Bearman, really change or asked she met with that team immediately and she really provide further guidance or further training and to really help them with that data, this new data that they've never had before. And then we recently asked the regional coaches from the Virginia Literacy Partnerships, who created the, the VOWS at the UVA, we asked two of our region, those regional coaches to come and train our reading specialists on how to really interpret this mid-year data and to really, so they can help teachers, so they can really revise those plans that they're in charge of and really understand that mid-year data. And it was so good that we asked them to come back to do it for our teachers and optionally, it's not, it's not required, but we really thought it would be valuable for our teachers. So they're coming back this month to do that training for any teachers that are interested in seeing and hearing them.
I have a question with the two and a half hour, you know, the intense intervention, are they pulled out of a class for that or is this after school?
No, this is during the school day. Good question. This is during the school day, but it's outside of the core instruction, so they're not missing core instruction.
Okay.
So it's within their school day, it's an additional, additional instruction.
So like maybe during art or?
No, no, they're not missing that either. It's usually within, close to the literacy block, but we have our, our literacy block is much longer than required. So it's, sometimes it's part of that, usually, they usually have a time where it's called, you know, it could be called something specific for that school or that grade, that each grade has a specific time where students can be pulled where they're not missing anything.
Okay.
Sometimes it's called when, what I need, it stands for what I need, but it's a specific time that they have so that they're not missing core instruction.
Right.
And also that the readings, excuse me, not only they're pulled for intervention, making sure that the teacher also pulls them for small group within that time period and they don't miss that. It's not to replace that at all. And then in addition, Molly, our English coordinator, she really reviewed that data with our school principals so that they could understand it and really help to support those teachers with those targeted intervention and, as well. And then at the school level, that's where the real work happens. So the schools really analyze their data from the mid-year POWS. They focus down from the grade data, they look at the class data, and most importantly, specifically, they look at individualized student data. As you can see here, this is an example student. And they really modify and update their interventions and approaches according to that data that they received from this mid-year assessment. And then teachers also and teams, they meet on a, at mid-year for those student reading plans, making those adjustments as I mentioned. And they also include the parents so that they can provide any additional or new resources that they can use with their student at home. But then all students or all parents receive a report from the mid-year VOWS student report. And so lastly, because this is a new assessment, the VLP who created this, they have recently posted a link on their platform where the teachers go to put their data in for a survey to get feedback on this assessment. You know, last year they just piloted it with a couple of school divisions. They really want to hear from teachers to know like, hey, how did this go? What would you change? What do you want to know more about? So we really appreciate that. In addition, last Thursday, VDOE announced that they were going to have a webinar this Wednesday from the VLP leaders to tell division leaders key components and understanding of the VOWS test development and how they came up with those ranges, those field score ranges. So we really look forward to Wednesday hearing about that, which is good. And then additionally, VDOE announced that they're going to finally give us all from the fall statewide data so we can see how we compare to other school divisions and states. So we're looking forward to seeing that and when we get that, we will share that in Friday notes. Okay? All right. And then I'll be back in, in June with the spring results, which are going to be fantastic.
Thank you, Ms. Head.
This looks great, by the way.
We have one, we have one presentation. We always save the best for last when it comes to program of studies. Dr. Cagle and Dr. Evans are here and they're going to talk to you a little bit about some of the proposed changes to the School of Arts course offerings for FY26. Dr. Cagle.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair, board members, and Dr. Shandor. Dr. Evans and I are tag teaming once again. We told you we would come back multiple times this year. And so we are hopefully on our last and final presentation for next year's program of studies. So as we've told you in previous meetings, the work that we do on the program of studies is to, is to support our students in their post-secondary endeavors and prepare them to be future-ready graduates. And I want to start tonight, as Dr. Shandor shared, a lot of what you're going to hear about tonight is related to our School of the Arts program at Bruton High School. And I want to start by sharing the work of a steering committee that happened this year. Now, if you remember, last May, I came before you at a present, a board presentation and talked about a group of school and division leaders, school counselors, and teachers who had met and done a program evaluation on our middle school fine arts program, the MSAM program, which resulted in some changes to the courses at MSAM. We also changed the locations and we changed the model. Instead of it just servicing a small number at each grade level, it's now a whole school model at the middle school level. And so this year, we, we pulled another committee together and we expanded on that work to focus at the high school level on how we can grow our School of the Arts program at the high school level. And so we really wanted to emphasize how we can provide more fine arts opportunities as well as give opportunities for certificates and degrees from, you know, after high school. And so we, the School of the Arts, the Bruton High School Administration pulled together a committee. We had fine arts teachers from across the division, administrators, central office staff. We had local community members who are involved in the arts or theater. We had some SOA parents, former SOA staff from way back in the day when the School of the Arts was, was new. And we had, one of our former SOA staff is actually a director of a SOA program now somewhere else. And we did a lot of research on others, fine arts programs. And we had some former students as well at that committee. So we, we convened, we met four different times. And what you're going to see tonight is part of what they recommended with the program. And that, those recommendations went to our program of studies committee. You've heard us talk about the process for that because they make a recommendation to you that at the end of this month, you will approve any of these changes. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Evans and she's going to start sharing some of those recommendations. Do you like them all spread out or?
So what you'll see on the left are our current literary arts courses. The YCSD and Advanced Placement English Curriculum is currently taught in our advanced literary arts classes. You'll see in the middle, our current English courses. And so based upon low student enrollment and implications on transportation, we are proposing that our students take their English classes at their zoned high schools. This will provide students with more instructional time in their English classes as well as other classes. Students have approximately five to 10 minutes to change classes within their building. It takes about 20 to 30 minutes to transport up to Bruton High School. So we believe that this will be beneficial for our students getting more instructional time in their classes. Next on the chart, you will see our Advanced Arts Link and Writers Workshop. And so just as a reminder, the Advanced Literary Arts is our English course, whereas the Advanced Arts Link and Writer Workshop is an elective course. So there are two separate courses taking over, taken over two different class periods. And so we are proposing to change Advanced Arts Link and Writer Workshop to Advanced Writers Workshop 1 and 2. And this is so that way students can have more opportunities to take elective courses in our literary arts program. So if you remember back in November, we added script writing for stage and screen. And so we are also looking at what additional literary arts elective courses we can add in the future. To encourage students in all grade levels to participate in our advanced theater program, we are proposing to change the grade level from nine to 11 to nine through 12th grade. And then for our advanced technical theater program, we are proposing to align this course with our other SOA programs, dance and theater arts. Those courses offer four different grade levels. So they have level one, two, three, and four. So we are proposing to align our technical theater program with our other two courses. Next you'll see our proposed changes for our SOA practicum courses. The steering committee really wanted to see how they could provide our students with enriching opportunities within their post-high school goals. And so based upon that and to align with VDOE's definition of work-based learning experiences, these are our proposals for the practicum courses. So we're proposing to remove Advanced Arts Link and Writers Workshop 12 with practicum. We're also proposing to separate our technical theater, theater arts program as well as the dance arts from the level four classes. And then we're also proposing to add a music workplace experience course. And now I will turn it back over to Dr. Cagle.
So a lot happened in November. One of those things was that we expanded the School of the Arts to include a music course. It hadn't had a music course previously. And you approved the Music Performance Lab for the School of the Arts. So we wanted to keep the ball rolling and when our students back in November, you may remember Accell Academics, we had a group of students and staff talking about our dual enrollment opportunities in York County that we have expanded. We were thinking that, well, when our students are trying to get a uniform certificate of general studies or an associate's degree for applied social science, which we spoke about that night, here's a great opportunity to offer some DE music classes at the School of the Arts. It makes it unique to the School of the Arts and it really focuses on the fundamentals of music, music theory, music appreciation. But again, the students are getting those dual enrollment credits. And so this was kind of, our only concern with this is that we've got to find staffing. So we're working on that and we've got to get those enrollment numbers up. It may not take next year, but we want to get it in the program of studies so students can start thinking about it. So we're really excited to be expanding music opportunities at the School of the Arts. Music wasn't a part of, of SOA before. And so, and you back in November approved the Music Performance Lab like I mentioned? Well, we have updated that description because as we were writing the curriculum, we realized some of our other courses will take care of the theory and the music appreciation. This course, the description will just focus on the performance part, how they'll support the SOA presentations and events and stuff through vocal and instrumental. the SOA presentations and events and stuff through vocal and instrumentalist. And so we changed that description that you approved in November. We kind of clarified it a little bit. You'll see it in the red line document that was included in Board Docs and you'll see what those changes are. But it really streamlines that course a little more and hopefully attracts more students. There's something about performance that's appealing rather than theory and I don't know. The other thing we wanted to do was we want to build in some CTE courses in the School of the Arts. So we've been looking at our, the Virginia Department of Education offerings in CTE. We want our kids to be able to earn credentials with the new state accountability and also just to, you know, help them if they're going into the fine arts careers after high school. So we already have sports and entertainment marketing in our program of studies, so you don't need to approve that. We just want to let you know that we're going to offer that course at School of the Arts with a focus on the entertainment industry. And those students will be able to support the SOA program through marketing activities and such. And so next year, we'll come back to you, actually it'll be in the fall for the following year, with a second course, a Sports Entertainment Management course, to be a sequential to this. So we do have more courses to propose for FY27, but we felt like this was starting to expand the program and we can do it in incremental steps. The steering committee will continue to meet, will continue to have the protocols and the discussions as we can continue to build this program for our students who are interested in the arts from across the division. So the last thing that I wanted to share with you, these are just a couple of last-minute revisions that we came across as we were editing the document. You'll see them in the red line document. Our definition for standard and advanced studies diplomas did not completely align with VDOE. It said the same thing, but we wanted to use VDOE's language. So we put a link to VDOE in the document and we cleaned up the language to match the Virginia Department of Education. And then we also fixed some typos and corrected some spelling and we tried to make some consistency. If there was an acronym used in one place, we have this, we have someone working on this who has an eagle eye and they catch all those little things. So they're very small, they don't change the content any, but they provide clarity and consistency of the content for our family members and our students. So those are all the changes that we're proposing. Last time, I hope you see me this year. That we're proposing for next year. Do you have any questions that we can answer for you?
Thank you for the update and giving us that information.
So at the end of the month, you'll see these come before you for approval.
At this time, we are going to move into Policy B, School Board Governance and Operations, and our school board attorney, Ms. Berry, will take over and tell us about that.
Madam Chair, Board members, Dr. Shandor, tonight is Chapter B for the board's review. This is just for discussion. We have multiple minor revisions, adding or taking away legal references and cross-references, as well as adding the BSBA copyright where appropriate. Substantive revisions, Policy BB, School Board Legal Status. We have language removed so it aligns with the Virginia Code as well as the BSBA. Policy BBA, School Board Powers and Duties, has some additional duties that are required to be added to comply with Virginia Code Section 22.1-79, as well as a definition of specialized student support position. BBF A, Conflict of Interest and Disclosure of Economic Interest, language is added and removed to align with the State Government Conflict of Interest Act, which is Virginia Code 2.2-3100, that whole chapter. Policy BCB, School Board Officers, has updated language that will align with BDDH/KD that is before you tonight during the special meeting for approval. Policy BCC, School Board Clerk, has language updated to reflect board practice and the terminology used at the organizational meeting. Policy BCG, School Attorney, has language removed as the Virginia Code does not require annual appointments for this position, as this is now a contractual matter. Policy BDSA, Calling a Notification Close Meeting, has language removed that is duplicative of the language already addressed in Policy BDDA, which is Notification of School Board Meetings. Policy BDD, Electronic Participation in Meetings from Remote Locations, has a little bit of additional language referencing the ability of the board members to attend close sessions for your advisory committees. So if they ever had a close session, which I think is fairly rare, board members are free to attend those. And keep in mind that BDD needs to come before you on a yearly basis. So you'll be seeing that every year. Policy BDDC, Agenda Preparation Dissemination, has language, the language format changed for clarity to align with board practice. Policy BDDE, Rules of Order, has language added to add clarity and specificity to align with board practice. Policy BDDG, Minutes, has language removed to align with the Virginia Code, as Minutes are now posted on the website, so you're not seeing Minutes being handed out anymore, and aligns with board policy and board practice. Policy BDDH, Public Participation in School Board Meetings, is what's coming before you tonight with KD in the special meeting. Policy BFC, Policy Adoption, has language removed as it's no longer applicable since we have Board Docs and everything's posted on Board Docs. Policy BHB, School Board Member In-Service Activity, has language added as to your required annual, every two-year training. And that is, that's open for discussion if anyone has any questions.
I guess I have one question on, if I've got this right, page 16, BDB, Special School Board Meetings, actually first paragraph, changing the pronoun his to their. And this is just grammatical. I know in a lot of documents, you'll have a statement at the beginning of the document identifying that a masculine pronoun is used, but it's for everybody. Why would we, because it's kind of confusing because it's talked about the chair on their own initiative. It either needs to be the singular or a repeat of, and just say the chairs, which is annoying. You know, called by the chair on the chair's own initiative as opposed to there because it's not a plural.
I don't see a problem with it the way it's written.
Isn't this more per-content based? This is discussion on the content, not on the grammar?
Correct. And I don't believe we say anywhere that singular is the plural.
That's what I didn't know if we had that, maybe we should or something like that. So we shouldn't be going through the red line of changes tonight or anything that we had questions of? This is just kind of a presentation of just general?
That's a board's discussion as to.
Discussion as to changes, but related to content, not necessarily.
Well, I just, I just went through going through and that was one that I saw. You know, when you go through pages and pages and pages of documents, there are.
I think if you have specific grammar, I would say put in an email, Ms. Berry, directly with those grammatical.
Yeah, there was just one other one like that on page 24. It says, "Following input form, all board members," I think it's supposed to be from.
Which policy is that?
Page 24. I forgot to write down which policy one it says. Hang on.
BDDA.
Thank you.
Okay, it's a BDTC.
Should be from, yes. Okay. Thanks. And thanks a lot on page 25 for adding that we use Rules of Order. So it just identifies that specifically. On, also on that page 25, and I apologize, I didn't write down what the letter was going through this, hang on. I guess that's. Just a second. Maybe I got on the wrong page. Scrolling through all of these, it was the one dealing with adding other forms of self-governance. Okay, thank you. Write that down in my notes. Is there a code that is requiring that?
It is not required. The board under, I believe it's 22.1-78 allows for any kind of bylaws. So that would fall under that.
Well, if it already says that, why do we need to add other forms of self-governance?
Because the board uses other forms of self-governance.
Well, so basically with that, any outside entity or lobbying group, et cetera, could have their governance implemented and mandated if a majority of the board members push it. I thought it was on page 25.
It's Rules of Order.
Yes, BDDE, Rules of Order.
Does any other board member have any input on that one?
I don't see an issue with it. I mean, we can, as long as the board agrees in the majority, we could change anything, whether it's the Rules of Order or any of the topics listed here. So I don't, I don't understand.
So the issue is with, you're having issue with where it says, or other forms of self-governance?
Of self-governance.
But I understand that you were saying that that, we do have other forms of self-governance.
We do currently have many forms of self-governance.
Don't we have that with the board norms and protocols as one, for example?
We have your self-evaluation, your governing yourself through your evaluation.
So we wouldn't want it in there. But from what you're saying, then we would want it in there. To cover ourselves.
We would like to have that, yes.
So Ms. Berry, I do have another question. Is this the appropriate place to discuss BDTC, which is our agenda preparation, which is how our agenda is set up? I have one item in our agenda I think we need to at least look at. Comments by board members? I think there ought to be some parameters in there with those comments because it could become lengthy at times.
That wouldn't be BDTC, that would be BDZ.
Appropriate, yeah, BDTC is for getting things on the agenda.
Gotcha. And that one's not on this for discussion, correct?
It is. It is towards the back.
Agenda format.
Yeah. It's the actual agenda format.
I mean, I don't know how long it would take to come up with those parameters that we would have. Maybe we could recommend to suspend that from the agenda until we can get some parameters done.
Yeah, the format is what the board came up with years and years and years and years ago. I mean, I would say 1988, since that's the first.
Yeah, and there was times when I was on the board, we never even had it on the agenda, even though we had it in the policy, we just never. I guess we did cover it. I guess we did. I'm thinking it was the committee reports. We didn't have one there that we had. So I don't want to get rid of the committee reports. I think, you know, they're, I do most of mine on Board Docs anyway, but I don't know, just my thoughts. I don't know what the other board members think.
I think having parameters around it is good. There's other, you know, if it goes out, if something needs to go outside the scope of that, there's other ways that that can be discussed. You know, you can put it, you can put it up on Board Docs as a separate document. You could put it in a newsletter if you're doing a newsletter or.
Town hall meeting.
Town hall meeting, something like that. That can be done that way. So it's not like you're not getting your information out there, but it would help to kind of streamline that part of it because it can go. And actually, there have been a couple of people who made comments about the fact that that's such a long portion of it.
Matters by Board Members is designed to provide the board opportunity to update the public on what they did over the last month. Now that we have Board Docs, which wasn't in place back when this was first adopted, Board Docs has a special area for board members to go in and put down what you've done over the past month and it creates a nice running tally for the board members so that you can keep track of what you've done. And so when you do come back to that self-evaluation, you have it all written down and you're not trying to scroll through all your comments for the last year.
That's a good point, anything about that.
So it's right there in front of you. So that was added, we brought it on Board Docs years ago. That was a nice perk that was added for the board members.
Okay, so something we can further discuss, because I know we don't vote here, but definitely discuss more and then maybe bring it at the next meeting or something as a vote if we want to do that. Does that sound? I want everybody to have time to think about it.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, and not just, you know, make it, think about how you feel about that individually. Okay?
Yep.
One, let's see on page 31. Removing Distributed Specifics. It was a whole section that's under BFC, Policy Adoption. I think it goes, or Changes in Policy or Regulations, Prepared and Distributed to All Concern. Now, I understand that, you know, since it's all digital, but there was nothing in here saying that it will be, you know, updated by a certain time or by a certain date.
There actually is a SOP that goes with this that I presented at the board retreat, the whole SOP on how policy is updated in the system.
Well, would it be, would it be a good idea, you know, even to identify, you know, the distribution is digital per SOP? Just so there's actually an idea here of how it's supposed to be distributed.
I don't have anything else.
I don't have anything else. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Berry. All right, thank you for everyone who attended this evening. Next, we're going to hold a special meeting after we take a short break. This meeting's adjourned.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the March 10, 2025, special meeting of the York County School Board. Our first item is an action item, consideration of approval of Resolu-, excuse me, Resolution 25-15, a resolution authorizing specific procurement. Is there any discussion before we vote?
Would you like me to share the information?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there are four items listed and we have A&E Services for TAP High School additions and renovations for 3.6 million. We have CDW, Admin and Student Lab Desktop Replacement Computers for $900,000. We're trying to get ahead of the tariffs, et cetera, for that. Also, we have Core Medical Group or CMG, the additional funds requested for year-round services through June. The original PO amount was $49,875. We need an additional $42,000. And then we also have Maxim Healthcare, additional funds requested for year-round services through June. The original PO was amount of $244,918.75. We need an additional $34,000. So Mr. Bowen, do you have anything to add related to those?
Just to add to the Core Medical Group, that's for nursing services. And for Maxim Healthcare Nursing Services, Speech Language, Pathology, and Oral Communication Facilitator.
Any questions?
These computers are the part of our budget?
They are. Yeah, they are. Those funds will be coming out of the Tech Reserve Fund.
And just so everybody else knows who's listening, the A&E Services, since that's such a big chunk, if you could explain that, that's already in the budget?
Yes, the $3.6 million is in the budget. And as we talked a little bit earlier about the CIP and about that particular project, there will be opportunities to modify. And as we talked a little bit earlier about the CIP and about that particular project, there will be opportunities to modify that scope of service, not only for the construction part, but also we're looking to modify some of the scope for the A and E.
Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty-five dash fifteen, a resolution authorizing specific procurement?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move approval of Resolution twenty-five dash fifteen, a resolution authorizing specific procurement. I will say.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Howard?
A motion is made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve Resolution twenty-five fifteen, a resolution authorizing specific procurement. Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero.
Next, we have Policy Second Reading, consideration of approval of revisions to Policy KD slash BDDH.
Yes, there are no changes.
No changes?
No changes.
Okay, any questions or comments? All right, thank you, Ms. Howard?
We need a, I'd like to make.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of revisions to Policy KD slash BDDH. Second. There you go.
Okay, I have Ms. Howard.
A motion is made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mr. Pyavich to approve revisions to Policy KD BDDH. Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairman?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero.
Thank you.
All right, so the next part of this is discussion under enforcement of board norms and protocols. Before we proceed, I'm going to read something and ask for a vote, a motion and a second to move forward. Okay, so fellow board members, in August of twenty twenty-four, we had our board retreat. And at that time, we revised our Code of Conduct and Board Norms and Protocols, and we voted to adopt them. Part of our norms and protocols included a section for handling violations committed by board members. As such, we have come to a place where one of our board members, Ms. Linda Fairman, has violated our norms and protocols several times, leading up to Violation Four, which states the school board may discuss the violation with the school board member at a public board meeting. This involves open discussion for the public regarding violations and a public statement of the board's position regarding such behaviors by Ms. Fairman. As Chair, it's my job to bring this before you and vote on moving forward with such discussion. At this time, I ask for motion and second to proceed with such discussion regarding the actions of Linda Fairman.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we continue with the discussion of the violation of the board norms and protocols, the fourth offense. I'll second.
Okay.
A motion is made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to proceed with discussion report regarding.
You have to have discussion, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Discussion.
We have the first and the second, I needed to open for discussion on this particular.
Proceed with discussion.
Proceed, yes. Proceed, discussion to proceed with discussion, I know it sounds.
Proceed with discussion regarding violations of board norms and protocols.
No, no, no.
Ms. Howard, they're not going to vote right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're fine, you're fine.
It was my fault because I didn't go and say, or is there any discussion on the vote? So it's a little confusing, it's my fault. Okay. Any particular discussion on this before we vote?
I don't have any, no.
Okay. Now.
Now.
Otherwise, I would have been out of order.
All right, a motion is made by Ms. Richardson and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to proceed with discussion regarding violation of board norms and protocols by Mrs. Fairman. Mr., Mrs. Fairman?
No.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
A motion passed four to one.
Okay. All right, so bear with me as I read this and then we will have the open discussion. As Ms. Fairman has already discussed at the January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five regular board meeting, the history of events leading up to this moment started with the first violation that was addressed via a verbal warning. A warning was delivered in a letter format on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, stating a post was made on Facebook that was derogatory in nature towards the superintendent, and a reminder that per board norms and protocols and Code of Conduct, board members will always strive to demonstrate appropriate behavior conduct as a public school board member. The second violation occurred on or about ten thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, and it was issued on November fifteenth for violation of the Code of Conduct number four, number eight, and number nine, and the sixth bullet of the board norms and protocols. Number four of our board norms and protocols, I will delegate authority for the administration of the schools to the superintendent. Eight, I will refrain from using the board position for personal or partisan gain and avoid any conflict of interest with the appearance of improprietary, impropriety. Nine, I will respect the confidentiality of privileged information and make no individual decisions or commitments that might compromise the board or administration. And bullet six, we will be focused on our work as a board and not interfere with the day-to-day operations of the school system, which is the responsibility of the superintendent. Now, I will make note that in the letter that was issued, number nine and bullet six were not put into that letter, but they also, that violation was also part of that, we, there was other violation there, so I do want to note that. On October thirty-first, Ms. Fairman emailed Dr. Shandor stating that Senator Diggs, Delegate Cardoza, Delegate Green, and Representative Whitman should be invited to the Blue Ribbon Ceremony at Bethel Manor, as it would be a major protocol error not to invite them. That same day, Dr. Shandor responded declining to invite them, as again, this was a school-wide, local celebration, and the state or federal level events were more appropriate for the legislators. In addition, as only Republicans were suggested, there was the concern that it could create the appearance the division endorses the particular party over another and could turn the student celebration into a photo opportunity for political gain. As this was a school-based celebration, not a board event, it was an event delegated to the superintendent per the Code of Conduct. Additionally, on January twenty-seventh, Ms. Fairman stated that she contacted three elected officials, Cardoza, Diggs, and Green, to inform them that they were not invited to Bethel Manor Elementary School Blue Ribbon Award Cer- excuse me, Award Celebration, apologizing for what she indicated was a misunderstanding. However, as an invited guest to a school-based celebration, she was not in a position to invite additional guests in the first place. That is the purview of the superintendent, not an individual board member or the board as a whole. This is a violation of our board norms and protocols, as the board will be focused on our work as a board and not interfere with the day-to-day operations of the school system, which is the responsibility of the superintendent. Additionally, had the board wished to include elected representatives as additional guests to the school-based event, the board as a whole would do so, not one board member. And it would be the chair's responsibility to speak to the superintendent about it or extend the invitation. The chair or designee will speak as the official voice of the board. A single board member will not represent the board without the consent of the board, and board members making personal statements in any format, including speeches, articles, social media posts, et cetera, should clearly state that these statements are their opinion and not the position of the board. Violation three occurred January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, during the board's organizational meeting. Following the meeting, being called to order, and my introductory remarks, but prior to the election of the twenty twenty-five officer, officers, you interrupted the proceedings with a point of information. At that time, you proceeded to read a three-page letter dated December thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, from Ms. Amanda McGuire and the Attorney General, with the Attorney General's Office, allowed to the board. Pursuant to Robert's Rules of Order, a point of information is a request for information relevant to the business at hand, but not related to parliamentary procedure. Your recitation was not a request for information, but rather an attempt to disrupt the meeting and undermine the board through a blatant breach of protocol. This placed the board in peril of a violation of FOIA. There was no remorse on your part for this action, and in fact, a follow-up letter from your attorney tried to make it my fault because I chose not to gavel you out of order. However, I will state for the record that once you placed the letter into the hands of the board members, the damage was done and the violation was committed. You attempted to make the issue about technicalities instead of seeing that you committed a violation. This is even more concerning, as you often make everyone aware that you're a parliamentarian. As a result, you were removed from your committee assignments and your badge access was revoked. However, I would like to note that this is in no way, has it, this in no way prevents it, prevents nor continues to prevent your ability to visit schools. So we are now faced with a fourth violation due to your actions. This violation occurred on January twenty-seventh at a regular board meeting during Matters by Board Members. You shared that I have heard from some teachers who supported President Trump that they are concerned they will be treated negatively since a reaction is opposite from what the VEA email presented. You also stated, I have heard from some parents that their children came home saying their teachers said a similar political statement to them in class, and they were unsure how to respond since they were pleased with the outcome. Additionally, you mentioned, I have received several calls about the time out of school for the recent snow. All of these examples are violations of the board's norms and protocols, as well as the superintendent's contract. Under the terms of the superintendent's employment contract, the board, both individually and collectively, will promptly refer all criticisms, complaints, and suggestions concerning the York County School Division or its employees to the superintendent or his designee for investigation, study, review, and recommendation. By not sharing this information with the superintendent, the board now could face potential litigation. This would result in the division having to pay damages of a significant amount, as well as legal fees. The board does not condone these behaviors, and as such, requests that you refrain from making any further violations of either the norms and protocols, Code of Conduct, and Dr. Shandor's contract. If you are not aware of the content on either the board norms and protocols, Code of Conduct, or Dr. Shandor's contract, please review them to avoid continued violations. And I will just add, just for context, that nobody typed this for me, nobody wrote this for me. I did this myself. It took me several hours yesterday to pull all the information in. But as Chair, we are at that state of fourth violation and are carrying out what we agreed to.
Thank you. I think you covered it, I don't have any other discussion about it. Other than we don't have anything for a fifth violation. We need to revisit that, but I think if it continues, we just need to continue what we just did, so the public knows.
Right, so that is true, this, we only went up to four. I think when these were originally done, that we didn't see that we would probably ever have a need for that.
Never thought.
But my concern, but we do, my concern is at this point now, we are, you know, litigation is expensive, we're fast-tracking right there, and, you know, I took, I took an oath to be fiscally responsible, and as Chair, I feel even more compelled to be responsible for the management of, you know, dollars. And I don't want to see us having to pay out money for litigation. It's unnecessary. It's a matter of agreeing, staying true to what we agreed upon. And I know you weren't there for the board retreat, that was your choice, but that does not mean that we don't, if any member is not present and we vote on something, it doesn't mean that we're, you know.
It's no less binding.
It's no less binding, we all have to agree to them. And if there's a problem with one, then we, somebody, you have to say, like, I don't agree with this, and I'd like to come back to the table, and I'd like to discuss it or have a discussion about it. But we can't just, none, none of us can just decide, well, I don't like that, I'm not going to adhere to that. And we cannot violate a contract, there's no if, ands, or buts about that. I mean, it's pretty cut and dry.
I'll say that my attorney identified that the three supposed violations, I was actually violated or prevented from my First Amendment free speech rights. That he laid it out pretty clearly in that letter. So the, the idea that this is one, two, three, and four. Number one is supposed to be, that it's supposed to be a verbal discussion, that did not occur, it was via letter.
It was a verbal warning, I mean, it.
True, no, I could speak to that because, and I, I.
You claimed, you claimed I had not returned calls, and I asked you on two different occasions, I said, let me know which things I have not returned when you've tried to reach out to me. And I never heard back. So, you know, that's, that's what it is on that thing.
But that was, you did get a.
Hang on, regarding the, the point of order, yes, that was a mistake, it should have been point of personal privilege, which I am allowed to do as a member of the board in order to identify that, and, you know, once again, that particular issue, my attorney addressed, that it was related to that first topic.
I don't know how, what information, if, is your attorney getting all the information? Is he getting the full?
Got it.
Full disclosure of everything, because it's easy to, to tell somebody your side of the story, but not give them the full.
Well, it's, it's easy, it's easy for anybody to go and watch the recording.
Yep.
That is true. But these are the events, these are the, the different events that have led up to violations, and they're, like I said, they're in our norms and protocols, and we are adhering to those, and until such time as anything is modified, we have to adhere to it. We can't just go rogue because we don't like it, or we don't feel it's accurate or right, we have to process, and we have to adhere to that process. I mean, if I don't like something, I just, I can't come in here and just say, I'm not going to, I have to go about it the right way. And that, I think that all of this is about not wanting to go through proper protocol.
Oh, just like, just like the Attorney General's Office attorney, who wrote the first letter that Mr. Richardson then said it doesn't matter because it wasn't written by the Attorney General and signed by him, and then a few weeks later, the Attorney General himself signed a letter because he heard there was question about it.
And he heard one side of the story.
Me.
That was, and again, what does it say, though, regarding that? It just says, opinion, it's his opinion, and opinion is not fact, it's an opinion. You can line up several Attorney Generals, I don't think you're going to get the same.
He cites the Virginia Code that you violated, that a board chair and, I believe it's and the vice chair, but the board chair's term is one year, and you cannot remove a board chair before that.
His interpretation is, there's two ways to look at it. It, it's, it is what it says, and you can't remove, and which I can't believe that would be the case, because there are cases where.
No way, that was the intent of the.
Or it's a term limit, it's a term limit, meaning every year, you're going to elect a new board member.
For one year.
But is it a term limit where they serve a year, but that doesn't mean that there's no exclusions?
He, he specifically says in there that it identifies that the term is for one year, and it's very specific of what the intent was of the General Assembly in identifying that.
Well.
I disagree, my opinion's different than that. My opinion is that he didn't hear the whole story about the issues we were having with the board chair at the time. If he'd have heard that, I bet his opinion would have been much different.
I mean, that's, that's something, I guess, then, for the courts to decide. You know, I mean, like I said, there's, the Virginia Code is not specific in all things, it doesn't outline, like, well, what if you have a board member who's doing some egregious things? Where you're just supposed, a chair, are you just supposed to sit there and say, okay, continue on and watch your division fall apart?
Yep.
Would that be, would that be smart? So I have to question the logic in that, but that's for some, that's not, that's not what I can do at this juncture. I'm just reading the viol-, I've read the violations, what's gotten us to this point, how we've evolved to this point. Okay, that's, that's really all this is about, is how we evolved to this point and a chance to discuss that, because that's.
I think whenever we came up with the boards and norms and protocols, that's a fair, we, we put a lot of time in coming up with it, and I think it was a fair assessment for all of us, and we agreed to follow it. So I think it's not much to ask from any of us to, to understand, follow it, because it is reasonable, it's not, it's not something that's outrageous.
No.
As far as like the letter from Mr. Miaras, I'm not attorney by that chance, but like when I sign up for this job. but like, uh, when I sign up for this job, I think majority does rule, and if we don't like it, that's, again, we rule as a board, so whatever majority comes up with, we have to stand behind it, do the thing, so. I think it's important to maintain that status as majority, as a board, uh, just for the benefit of all of us in our school today.
And again, I'm, I don't think there's any board member here that would say, if, if you, if any one of us felt like, you know what, I, I don't like the way this reads, I'd like to revisit it and talk, discuss it and tweak it, that we're gonna be like, nope, we're not gonna do that. I mean, we can do those things, we have authority as a whole to do those things. So if there are specific things, then you need to bring them to the Chair attention, my attention, so that I can say, okay, this is a concern, let's convene, and let's, let's talk about it. You know, nobody's trying to be, it's not about being authoritarian and saying, hey, you know, nothing you have is valid or, it's not about that, it's about process and a procedure. Because if you don't have that, then you have, you know, what's the word for that?
Chaos.
Chaos, thank you, chaos, and we don't need chaos. I mean, I don't think anybody operates well under chaos, maybe there's a few people, but I'm not one of them, so.
I will say it was interesting, um, on the day of the award ceremony, that when I got home and checked, checked my school emails, there was an email from the V S B A asking all school board members to make sure to reach out to their elected official and invite them to visit their schools in their district.
Again.
Yeah.
The V S B A may have said that, but we have a process, okay, of how we handle those things, okay, our board does. Again, you don't like that process, then we need to meet as a board and discuss that process and see if we need to change it.
But, but just to make clear, at that time, there were elected officials, they were not running for reelection, they were our elected officials, didn't matter, you know, if they had all been a different party or they had all been independent.
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, you, you're forget, back to.
That, that was used as an, as a reason why we should not invite them, so I'm just putting that out there.
But there were several reasons that I read in there, that being one of them, because we didn't, we don't want the perception, we wanna have the perception that we're not leaning one way or the other. That clearly was not the reason, there were, there were several stated in here of why that was. You know, it could have, the outcome could have been different if it was handled a different way. You know, and I think when you, you don't involve any board members, you just go out and, and, and take it upon yourself, you're acting as an individual, you're not acting as.
As a board.
A board.
Yes.
And that's been a lot of the problem, I think, is, is it's four board members trying to work together and one out here doing their own thing, and that's, I think, where a big, the big problem is, we need to try to work as a unit.
And I've said it before to you, uh, and I'll say it again, when you came on this board, you had a personal vendetta and a, uh, political agenda that you wanted to see done. You tried to be, uh, an executive like you were the CEO of the school division or whatever, and that's not your job, that's none of our jobs. Our job is to take care of the kids, the teachers, and the, uh, parents of York County's school district. Yes, we are, uh, funded by all the county, those with kids and those without, but our primary objective is to have the best schools possible so that we can give the type of service that is needed here. And all you have done since you've come on is question everything, and, and it's not right. I mean, this is one of the top-performing school divisions in this state, and it has been for a number of years. And everything that you've done, that you brought on, has created confusion and chaos. And we had teachers leave because of it, and I think that's ridiculous. We've, we've had, uh, staff people want to leave, we don't want that to happen. I want to have the best schools in, in the state.
And I think asking questions is fine, asking questions, it's not asking questions, it's how, it's the, the process behind it, how you ask the questions and how it comes across. But even more importantly, I think as a board, and it might be just a, 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 you know, the way you see a board versus the way I think the rest of us see a board, we're not micromanagers. My job is not to sit here and be a micromanager, I, I have a task, I'm supposed to make sure that things are on the up and up and everything is being done as it should be for the safety of our students, for the well-being of our community. But my job is not to micromanage what Dr. Shandor does on a day-to-day basis and tell him how he needs to run the school division. We hire a superintendent and we have to have trust the person is doing their job until we see something that lets us know that it's not being done right.
And, well, and it's one of those things that the board is directed, we are to be the oversight.
Oversight doesn't mean micromanaging.
Not micromanaging.
Yes, you are, yes.
When you go out and you, when you go out and you invite somebody without consulting your fellow board members.
Or when you take someone off the, the dais because you wanna put them down where they belong.
That's, that's micromanaging, and that's not what we're here to do. We, we have, we have a lot of good things that we can do as a board, and we can make some great suggestions and improvements and, but we aren't here to micromanage or tell somebody how they need to do their job unless for some reason, that person isn't doing the job effectively, in which case then you have a, a, a process for that.
We as a board have one employee, and, and it's Vic, okay? That, that's we as a board, he's not my employee, he's ours.
Right.
And it's our job to work with him for the betterment of the kids and parents and staff of Y C S D.
I've been on, I have been on the receiving end, and I think I said this before, working in an association where we had a board, and the board did exactly that, micromanaged, picking up the phone, calling and telling me how to do my job when I had an executive director who I directly reported to, and it was awful. It was the worst experience, I didn't know who I was supposed to listen to. It caused confusion, it, it, you know, and then I'd have to always go back to my, hey, this is what I was told, what am I supposed to do now I'm in the middle? So I can tell you from personal experience, that is not the role of a board. And you can find any good book out there on board governance, and doubt you're gonna find where it says the board should serve as a micromanager.
Well, just personal experience, in my five years on the board, there has not been a single time that I haven't emailed or asked Vic a question that it wasn't answered.
I, s- same here, I mean, if I ask a question or I say I need information, I get it, so I, yeah, so, and that approach seems to work. I have no issues going through Dr. Shandor to get the information I need. It's so that there can be, you know, we talked about in the military, kind of chain of command, right? So we can keep things going in one direction, um, you know, that's probably why the division runs smoothly because there's that process and that procedure, and I don't have any problem with it, I'm not in a power struggle. Uh, you know, I'm here to make sure that, that, you know, the division continues to do good and to do great, and, you know, we increase our numbers and, you know, that's, that's our job.
When people move here because of our schools and our property values increase.
I just had, I just had somebody today come out, my physical therapist, and said, this is, she said to me, she said, "I wish I could live in York County, I can't afford to, my kids go to school, you know, in Newport News, but I would love to be able to have them go to York County, but I can't afford it. You are one of the best school divisions in the country." So she's been looking at things, you know, schools across the country.
Tell them to come work for us.
And I said, I said, you know, and I said, you know what, you're right, we are, we are very good, and I felt I was very blessed to be able to have my son go through the school division. So the word on the street is not, this is such a, a bad place, it's quite the opposite, and we wanna keep it that way. But if you start having, you know, doing your own thing and the board is dysfunctional, well, everything is gonna flow from that, and that's what we don't want to have happen. So I hope, I hope that, you know, this is the last time we even have to have these conversations. Because I think of all this time, how can be spent doing other things that are important? You know, I know you have some great ideas on things, so, you know, that, that's what I, I'd like to see us move forward and not have to go through this. That's my, I've said everything I can say, anybody else have anything they wanna say?
I'm good, covered a hundred percent, and so did Mr. Pyavich.
All right, well, thank you for being here. Our next regular board meeting is March twenty-fourth, here at York Hall in the boardroom, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.